Buenos en Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. The time now is 9:11 a.m. on Friday, April 14, 2023. In compliance with open government law, notices of the day's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and provided via email to senators, stakeholders, the local media, and posted to the Guam government of Guam Public Notice website on February 7, 2023 for the five-day notice and Wednesday, April 12 for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today. Senator Jesse Luhon to my right, and to his right is Senator Chris Duñez. To my left is Senator Duane Siniklis, and to his left is Senator Roy Canata. Sidoos Masi. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the following items. The executive appointment of Mr. Daniel A. Tai Ting Fung to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. The next item is to hear testimony on the executive reappointment of Mr. Juan Carlo S. Pangolino to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Third item is to hear testimony on Bill Number 11-37COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. Sinagastin, co-sponsored by Senators Roy Anthony Beneventi Canata, Duane T. D. Siniklis. It's an act to amend Section 33009A of Chapter 3, Division 1, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to including retail businesses with large investments, the list of exemptions within the population limitations for new alcohol beverage control licenses. The third, I'm sorry, the fourth item on this agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 47-37COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. Sinagastin, co-sponsored by Senators Duane T. D. Siniklis, Roy A. B. Canata, and William A. Parkinson. It's an act to repeal Articles 7 and 8 of Chapter 6, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 26304, and to repeal Section 26601C and 26608, all of Article 6, Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 26305, Article 3, Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to excise taxes for alcoholic beverages and tobacco products. The final agenda item is to hear testimony on Bill Number 82-37COR, sponsored by Senator Duane T. D. Siniklis, co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Chris M. Duñez, Senator William A. Parkinson, and Senator Jesse A. Luhon, Senator Joe S. Sinagastin, and Senator Roy A. B. Canata. It's an act to amend Section 7120.2, 7120.5, 7160E, and 7161F of Chapter 7, Title 16 Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing the Republic of Korea veterans and distinguished flying cross recipients to qualify for Guam veteran license plates and to allow more documents to be used for veteran qualifications. The rules of conduct for today's hearing is as follows. Those called to testify will be in the order of those called in advance, followed by those on the sign-up sheet. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized and shall state their names for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given an opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions. Please make sure your questions are concise. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda and personal difference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. So now to begin our agenda. We are hearing the testimony on behalf of the executive appointment of Mr. Daniel A. Tai Ting Fung to serve as a member on the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. A brief overview of the Guam Protection Agency. The Board of Directors consists of nine members appointed by the governor with the consent of the legislature. Members serve a term of three years each, and some responsibilities include the following. The Board is responsible for appointing the administrator, who administers the matters of the agency under the supervision of the Board. The Board also appoints the deputy administrator, who is not a member of the Board and does not have the right to vote. The deputy shall perform the functions as the administrator desires during the absence of him or her. The Board also serves a critical role as an appellate body so that any citizen of the community who believes he or she has been aggrieved by an action or decision of the administrator of Guam EPA can request a hearing before the Board of Directors. The Board also hears notices of violations, any kind of infractions or enforcement actions by any entity. So notices of today's confirmation hearing were sent to the chairman of the Board. We have received testimony by the chairman himself as well as Mr. Brian Bomba. And so at this time, I'd like to call upon anyone who wants to provide testimony, including the nominee himself. So if you can please come forward. And please state your name. We're going to move from my left or, yeah, this far end, and we'll move down. Well, actually, we'll save the nominee for last. Okay, sir, you're recognized, and please state your name.
Hi. Good morning, Hafa Day. Mark Mendiola, citizen of Guam. I love our island. I think the Environmental Protection Agency plays a vital role in ensuring that our environment is safe and clean for our future generations. Hafa Day, good morning, Chair, Senator Perez, Senator Luhon, Senator Duñez, Senator Siniklis, and Senator Canata. I think I saw two senators last night. We did a marathon session last night on GDOE Special Education for like five hours. Yeah, we stayed. So anyways, it's, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here this morning to testify in support of the appointment of Mr. Daniel Tai Ting Fung. I know him as Professor Dan. He's actually my jiu-jitsu instructor. I've known him for over 10 years, both professionally and personally. In the professional capacity, I know that this young entrepreneur served our nation. He's a veteran, and he's come back to Guam, planted his roots here. His family's from Zonia. I know that he's very capable of providing guidance necessary to meet the mission of Guam EPA. I particularly, in terms of appointments, you know, oftentimes we come to these confirmation hearings, but I love to see when we have fresh faces, fresh ideas, and fresh people that come with a different perspective. And Mr. Tai Ting Fung here has traveled, he's seen a global perspective, and I think he's going to be able to bring that to the table, not only as a businessman here on Guam. And I just think it's very important, you guys are charged and tasked with vetting people that are appointed to the Board, and understanding that role, they basically act as fiduciary agents, but also as keepers at the gate to ensure that the agency's complying with the policies and the rules and the regulations. I know Mr. Tai Ting Fung to be very, very, got good wisdom, and his ability to ask questions. You know, I think this is the nature of what we do professionally. If you don't know, ask, and you know, build from there and get the information that's a part of you. I've sat on boards and commissions, and I always try to make decisions based on what's presented in front of me and the best interest of what I believe to be true. And I've witnessed Mr. Tai Ting Fung in these arenas, both in the private and the public sector. So I stand here today in support of his candidacy. I know he will serve our island well, and he will look out for our environment. Mendiola.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Mendiola. Next, we have Mayor. Thank you.
Good morning, senators. How are you guys doing this morning? Yeah, I'm glad to be here to testify on behalf of Mr. Danny Tai Ting Fung. To make it short and sweet and to the point, Mr. Danny Tai Ting Fung is an MPC member for, under the Attorney General's Office, under me, and he's a very humble man, and he, you know, he's, like I said, is part of my MPC, and his biases and his leadership towards, his guidance towards our village has been, you know, very helpful. And I'm pretty sure with him being on board with the EPA Board, he will do a great job too. So that's what I'm here for, to let you know that he's a very humble man, and he works hard too as well. And like I said, like Mr., I said about the jiu-jitsu, yeah, he's been a great leader too to the kids in Zonia, and I'm pretty sure he'll do a great job again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Kanga, for your testimony and for your participation today. So now I'd like to offer the floor to the nominee himself to provide his testimony.
Buenos en Hafa Day, Madam Chair, members of the 37th Guam Legislature. I'm humbled and honored to be sitting here in front of you all today to be considered as a member of the Board of Directors for the Guam EPA. Signo Masi for this opportunity. My name is Danny Tai Ting Fung. My wife, Jaylene and I, who unfortunately couldn't make it, she tried her best to be here, but we are the parents of five beautiful children, which is why she couldn't be here today, and we're from the beautiful village of Zonia. I understand our island is facing numerous environmental challenges, and it is my only hope that we can conquer these challenges and see the change happen now for the betterment of our island, our people, and our future generations. My commitment will be in helping make the tough and necessary decisions for the good of our island and our people. My passion is sustainability, and I have made it my life's work to tirelessly promote sustainable choices and be more conscientious about the dangers and harmful effects of single-use plastics. I humbly ask for your consideration and full confidence in appointing me to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board. Signo Masi.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Tai Ting Fung. So now I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. I'll say it reserved my questions for last. So Senator Luhon, if you have any questions.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning, Mayor, Mr. Mendiola, Mr. Tai Ting Fung. Good morning. I think we can recess now because of Zonia rules. But thank you for your presence this morning. Mr. Tai Ting Fung, again, congratulations on your nomination. I look forward to voting. I mean, I know you as well, so. But anyway, let me ask you just a couple of questions because actually our office has been entertaining this since day one regarding EPA. EPA seems to be a choke point for homeowners or home builders, developers, and things of that nature. What is your view on allowing holding tanks for businesses and homeowners in the ground, Guam Water Protection Zone where sewers not available and very expensive to put in? I know right now that EPA is really looking at it. They've been inundated with folks visiting them who can't build in homes that they, or in properties that they bought. And again, the situation where sewer line is not available or really expensive to bring it in miles and all that, what are your stance on that? Because I know it's, but not only that, but the permitting process, not just with that, but just permitting in general, where EPA has become a chokehold in a lot of sense.
Thank you for that question. You know, Senator, to be honest, I never realized that having, not having access to main sewage and having septic tanks was an issue, you know? Because personally, where I live too, we don't, we're not connected to the main sewage lines. So it is something new to me, and like I said, I never realized it was an issue, but you know, I do plan to learn more about it, you know, and to learn from the Board members and the agency themselves and figure out, you know, what the, what we can do about it and what are the other alternatives and how we can make it, make it work for, you know, to be, to make it work for the homeowners and the businesses because, again, like I said, I never realized that was an issue. And yeah, we definitely learn more about that and dive into it.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for that because it's an issue that EPA is really working with, and I'm thinking that it's going to need legislation to make the changes and all that, you know? And then we have to also balance it out of when the need for, to protect the waterlands and all that, right? But likewise, growth, you know, and all that, you know, homeownership nowadays is almost unaffordable at this point, and people are buying properties and going to build and then finding out that they really can't, can't get the permit because, again, they're around an area where they have to bring miles and miles of water or sewer line. And, you know, I mean, almost on a daily basis, we get calls from folks from the Chomor Lantros in the same situation as well. So thank you very much for that. But also outside of that as well, I mean, we deal with, man, we have, our paperwork is stuck at EPA. Can we, you know, can we just push it along? You know, and it's not because there's something wrong with it, it's just, you know, looking at it and getting an expedited process to be able to get things, get things done, you know? I, myself, or I think it was last year, and it wasn't an EPA, it was an agriculture where my paperwork sat for three weeks, and it just needed, it just needed a signature because all the, all the, all the reporting and all the inspections were done, it just needed the signature. And I couldn't take, I couldn't take my permit with me because, you know, at any, at any moment, they're going to sign it, and if I would have taken it, I could have had the other agencies sign off on it, you know, and then I'll bring it back, but it's, sir, no, no, because at any moment, it's going to be signed, three weeks, three weeks. So, you know, we just need, you know, the one-stop process is really not a one-stop process. It's a frustrating bulla stop process. Yeah, but anyway, I'm excited. We have, you know, a new thinker now, I'd be able to do that, and willing to learn, and a businessman at that, so you know the, you know, the balance between, you know, government bureaucracy and the need to get economic prosperity going, and likewise, definitely protecting the environment as well alongside that, the whole balance. But thank you very much. I look forward to your voting and your nomination.
Thank you. Sidoos Masi, Senator.
All right. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair, and Mr. Tai Ting Fung, thank you for being before us today. Mayor Kanga, thank you. And of course, the one and only, our good friend. You got good backers here. So, you know, I think the biggest thing that jumps out to me is your honorable service in the armed forces. And to me, I know that any employer, and I'm sure you as an employer now, that always ranks really high when you're looking at an individual and what they'll bring to the organization. So I think that integrity, first and foremost, is what already puts me in a favorable situation to honor the request of the governor, and thank you for stepping up and being willing to serve. I think the other thing that my good colleague mentioned here is that, you know, you're a businessman, and so I believe that you're going to bring that balanced perspective to understanding, you know, what's required to move EPA along. I was hoping the director would be here because I'm sure you're, we, obviously, to make quorum for the Board, you know, your nomination has been needed for a long time. So I'm glad that you're here and we'll do what we can to expedite this going forward. I'm not going to ask you a bunch of questions because as you mentioned earlier, you really are going to go into this and accept the responsibility of learning and getting on board, but I'm going to put something on your plate because I want to present to the Board once again. I'll be reintroducing a bill that Senator Tony Ada and myself worked on in the last term, and that is to deal with junk cars. You know, we've had this bounce back and forth between EPA, Public Works, GPD, citations, and the other issues. I just wanted to get your thought real quick to see at least if you agree with the premise of the bill that we introduced, and that is to basically after a certain amount of time, say 72 hours, consider a junk vehicle just trash. And I know that EPA has, and they've written some of the legal points that they want us to fix in the bill, and I am fixing those, but I just wanted to get your main concurrence, whether you think that's logical to say, if you're not responsible enough to remove your junk vehicle from the side of the road after 72 hours, would you consider that as garbage as well as many of us do?
Yes, sidoos Masi for that, Senator. Yeah, coming into the Board, you know, I don't know what the rules and regs are, but on a personal standpoint, I agree with you. It's an eyesore, you know, we see so many of it. We see it in our villages, we see it, you know, in our, in our, in our, you know, heading home into our personal streets, whatever, and it is an eyesore, and I totally agree with you, you know, and something needs to be done about it because it seems like it's getting worse, even on the main roads, you know, people just leave their vehicles there. And personally, in a specific village across the street from where my kids go to daycare, Catholic school, it just got cleaned up, and I've seen that there for maybe two years. But it, you know, that was a great thing. Probably the mayor coordinated for that specific village to clean it up, but I definitely agree with you. Yeah, it needs to be, something needs to be done.
And I agree with, you know, your sensitivity too. I mean, when we're talking about maybe on the inner villages, we're going to have to work on that a little bit more, you know, people are going to have to make a determination when they're working on it and they're done working on it, it's got to go. But my really main thing is on the main thoroughfares, the routed roads and the like, I mean, it's dangerous first and foremost, and secondly, you know, we see a lot of issues associated with that where, you know, it's an abandoned vehicle, and then it becomes an abandoned vehicle with no tires, then it becomes an abandoned vehicle with no hood and no doors. And, you know, let's be honest with ourselves, if a responsible individual really cared about that vehicle, they're going to get that darn thing off the road within 24 hours. So I just wanted to make sure that as we present this bill again, I know that the director will filter this thing through the Board as well, and legal will make the recommendations. We're going to clean it up, like I said, but I just wanted to make sure you are on board with something as straightforward as that because I think we really got to clean up our island, and we really got to get those junk cars predominantly off the road sites, and we want to redo that again. We want to be able to say after 72 hours, this is no longer a junk vehicle, this is trash, and we're going to remove it. So I've got a good feeling now. I had a good feeling going in, but if you can jump on board with the passion on that issue, you certainly, and like I said, your honorable service and as a businessman, I think everything looks to be a really good fit, and I thank the governor once again for giving your nomination coming forward, and look forward to voting and the affirmative on your confirmation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sidoos Masi, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. I'd like to recognize the Administrator Walter Leon Guerrero, if you don't mind coming to the table, and any words that you'd like to present at this time.
Hi. Thank you, senators. I have to admit, I do not know Mr. Tai Ting Fung, and I actually think that's a good thing. I welcome, first off, Senator Duñez, I was outside and I did hear, I didn't want to put Mr. Tai Ting Fung in a bad position by saying I didn't know him, but again, I think it's a good thing. I welcome people, first off, I want to acknowledge, yes, we are short on directors, so that we do need people, and so I welcome anybody onto the Board. I also wanted to make sure, again, to restate, I don't know him, but I welcome him because I welcome anybody's thoughts. Open-mindedness is what's going to get us moving forward, finding solutions, because sometimes we get stuck. I do want to say, and I'm sorry to dislike this, I know this is about you, sir, but the abandoned vehicles that we have a problem with, I do want to note that we spent over $5 million in the last four years to get abandoned vehicles removed from the streets of Guam, and I know that there's some white goods and some other things in it, but it's a community problem that needs to be addressed by the community. We can do only so much with the money, and $5 million is a huge sum to be allocated towards removing junk vehicles. And I'll get off the soapbox because again, this is about the point of business, I just want to remind people, there has been a large amount of funding spent to remove vehicles, and for some reason, we can't keep up. So thank you, sir. I support Mr. Tai Ting Fung, even though I don't know him, and I just butchered his name to be a part of the Board because we need Board of Directors, and I look forward to working with him and hearing about his ideas and his, any initiatives that he would like to push forward at Guam EPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Leon Guerrero. So yes, we do have a roundtable coming up, so let's just table that discussion. It's next week, Thursday. Right, thank you.
Madam Chair, if you could give me just one discretion, not on the abandoned vehicles.
Okay.
I just wanted to put it on the record. Walter, have you brought to the attention of the governor how critical this is in terms of needing nominees? Do you have any other nominees perspective coming down? Because we really shouldn't be down to the last guy and having the Board situation that it's in right now.
Yes, yes, Senator. It's been brought, and in fact, we just had a meeting two days ago, and she's asking me to come up with people that would want to be on the Board. Again, my, I'm going to try, but my hesitation is the Board is who actually confirms the Administrator, and also approves my PE, my performance evaluation. So I don't want it to be looked at that I'm building a Board that supports me. And so to be honest, I know I'm in a rock and a hard place kind of thing, where I need to find Board members. I don't want to find Board members that people will say, he's just filling a Board for himself. I don't want to do that, sir. But the governor knows the urgency, and she knows that there's 11 spots available. She, 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 when I said we need Board members, she herself, Madam Governor, said, I know you have 11, we're working on it, and if you could provide more names, please do. And so this is a cry-out to the public. If you're interested in being on the Guam EPA Board, call me up, and we can submit your name to try to get you on the Board. So yes, she does know, so I do want you to know, she brought it up too. After I brought it up, she took it over and said, we know exactly what needs to be done. Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, yeah, Walt, just because that shouldn't be your responsibility. Your responsibility should be to let them know what's going on. That's at the chief of staff level, that's at other levels. Their job is to get out there and solicit, you know, I've been in that position before to where we had to make a lot of phone calls and find people who are willing to serve. So I agree with it. I don't want, I don't want the burden to be on you. I just wanted to make sure that the notification has gone up. We, you know, we have a serious situation, we need quorum, and you've done your job as that part. I know you don't want to have people favorable to yourself, I can understand that, but that's the front office job. So I just wanted to make sure you're on the record saying you've sounded the alarms. Thank you, Walt.
Yes, Senator, and again, on the record, they have responded that they understand, and they'll be working on getting additional Board members. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Siniklis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. You got some good backers there spoke on your behalf, the mayor, Mr. Mendiola. I got you, I got your back, I got your back. Army hua. You're familiar with the VA and the VA language sometimes? There's always that thing, there's a de novo review. I hope that when you do go in, you know, you look at things with fresh eyes, and, you know, you make your decisions, and I've gotten a lot of complaints about EPA, you know, regarding permitting and the lengthy process. I hope that you, you know, try to find a way to be more compassionate and more understanding, and hopefully we can move our island forward, although we need to do the job, but we can also make sure that we process this in a timely manner, not like how the VA did it in, you know, processes in 2009, 2012, you know, that, so. I hope you do bring in fresh eyes and honesty and compassion to the people who actually have to go through the process. That's my only concern. Other than that, I heard jiu-jitsu, and you also do, you volunteer time for the kids. All you had to do was say that, and you got my, got my support. So you do have my support, and thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony this morning in support of our hua-hua soldier there. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service and your continued service beyond this point. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senators Siniklas. Senator, first of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Joe Sinagastin, thank you, sir. Like to recognize Senator Kanata, if he has any questions for the nominee.
Good morning, Mr. Taichin Feng. Congratulations. Is your family aware that you're being appointed to this board? Does your wife approve? Okay, I'm sure you'll be taking on a huge task on, as being a board member, I just wanted to find out if you're aware that there was a nine, roughly ten acre property given to EPA to design its headquarter, for its headquarters facility in Dedido? Are you familiar where that is? I know you're from the south, but it's up north.
I gotta take a trip up there, but no, like I said, you know, I'll learn it as I go, if granted the opportunity, and no, I'm not aware of the new facility.
Okay. To my understanding, it's a quite huge cleanup operation, the director has stated that it's grossly underfunded and it needs to be cleaned up, it's a huge environmental mess. So, you know, there were private companies once upon a time on that property, and I hope that you guys try to find some kind of common ground to figure out how to get the headquarters moving forward so that we can ensure that the employees of EPA are housed in better facility, because I know your facility in Tiza has been tried through and already it's been tested, and it's just like DOE public schools, their time has come and I think it's, you know, time to move forward. So I'm hopeful that you maintain course with that new facility and the headquarters in Dedido, so that we can get more swiftly, things more swiftly done and probably have a better operationing, operating system for EPA. I understand, are you familiar with erosion control?
Yes, just briefly going over the different rules and regs under GPA, yes, but yes, more to learn for sure.
Okay, because we've had companies recently really violate erosion, sediment and contaminating water, the water over at Marble Cave, although it's private property, it was once upon a time a huge tourist site, also local site, but unfortunately, that water's contaminated, and I don't think that water will ever be up to par, you know, for how many years it's been cleaned, right? Other than that, I don't see any real issues, I know my colleagues already brought up the sewer issue, I do have interest with that, I know that there's a lot of properties that are over the water aquifer up north, unfortunately, those that themselves don't need to deal with that issue, you guys can have leaching fields. But on a development standpoint, it's quite a huge task for you to try to find a sewer line, and I don't think that's the developer's fault, I mean, if they're a tycoon developer, then of course they can afford the initial blow of the cost, but I think we really need to find solutions and bridge the gap between the small homeowner groups and literally the small housing areas, because it's a very tough task to carry out, and bless you guys for taking on this endeavor. On another note, I know that we do have some interest for tire recycling, and they also share the same situation, they need to find some kind of leaching, I mean, not leaching field, but they need to find some kind of storage tank that's feasible for you guys to, I guess, advise on and accept for operation. And then also, the junk car removal is a longstanding issue, so I'm hopeful that you can help address those issues. Other than that, I'm sure Mr. Mark Mendiola and my prim over there, Bill Kenya, have good insight on your work ethic, so I don't think there's really any problems with your support today, and bless you and have a great time. Let us know what we can do to help EPA and move your guys' agenda forward, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. Senator Sinagastin, if you have any questions for the nominee?
Sure, I have a lot of questions for Mr. Taichin Feng, but, you know, it's really just comments. You're with my cousin here, and then you're with my two brothers from Dealix, so you're in good hands. I only ask, and I thank you for accepting the nominees. Look at your background, you're former NCO, the United States Army, ammo, you know what it takes, where you're gonna set ammo, so when you do whatever you're gonna do at EPA, you know what you need to do, and because your background's also in real estate, I know you're gonna be friendly to the real estate industry, correct? And when you do that, you end up being friendly to all, that's the beauty. I know they brought up many things about the ammunition, I mean, the trash that's out there. I hope that you, as a board member, you will participate in their budget process, what they're gonna be asking for and what they need their money for, because when you come before me on the budget, you first go through your oversight, but by the time you get to me, I hope you have all your i's dotted, your t's crossed, because if you don't, I'll make sure I snowpack it out, there's no i's, there's no t's, and that we come to terms of what you need and how we can get you to where you need to be, okay? That's the main thing. When it was mentioned about the site you guys are moving up to Dedido, for me, that's self-inflicted, the site was determined by EPA, if you found out it's trash, you should have checked it before you asked for it, you know how that works, it's like a real estate agent, before I attempt to sell a property, I make sure first it's sellable, otherwise it's like, mm, I should have went somewhere else. But at the end of the day, I hope for the best for you, and I will support your nomination, you're among good people, stay focused and you'll be okay, your family's backing you, and you're from Zona, what they say, Zona rules? Nah, don't let Zona rule you, do what you need to do, because you'll do fine, and we're gonna have fun, and we'll just take care of the people who want. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Taichin Feng, for stepping up to the plate, as you know, we're in a critical situation where Guam EPA Board of Directors is not meeting quorums, so your presence at every meeting is critical, because there's a huge responsibility that the Board of Directors has, especially with, if there are violations that has to be dealt with. And so, are you confident that you'll be able to attend all the meetings on top of all the responsibilities that you have?
Yes, Senator, I'll definitely make it, you know.
And then the other thing that goes with that, obviously, you're gonna have a steep learning curve, EPA has a lot of mandates, and so, yeah, you're gonna be learning a lot on the job, so in addition to attending the meetings, preparation is also critical to understand, and of course, you have your resources, you have the administrator, you have other directors who you can turn to, and you have my office as well, if you have any questions regarding any mandates. The other thing, I'm glad that my colleagues asked a lot of questions regarding, I think they did a tour of the different mandates or challenges that Guam EPA is doing, and one of them that I would like to bring up is the plastic bag ban, so you yourself had talked about the issues of microplastics, and I see still that the plastic bag ban hasn't been quite fully implemented. Of course, you as a board member may have to address any enforcement actions, and what is your, I guess, what is your thought about the plastic bag ban?
Thank you for that, Senator. Again, on a personal standpoint, I am completely against the plastic, you know, the plastic bag use, and again, I don't know the rules and regs from the EPA, but definitely, personally, I am against it, and, you know, if we can do something about it and we can push the issue and get these stores to cooperate, you know, or, you know, what do you call it, fine, or whatever we have to do, then, you know, we'll push the issue, because it is a, it is a personal, I do, I am personally against it, so, yeah.
So one other thing I wanna point out is that we did pass a bill, the Zero Waste Bill, and so that has opportunities for incentivizing the ban, so, you know, just to keep an eye on that one. Other issues, I noticed you have a background in hazmat, are there any opportunities, or what can you, what do you think you can provide or contributions you can provide to the board in regards to your experience?
So, yeah, hazmat, I mean, you know, just following proper protocol, and again, just learning, you know, just learning, just learning what EPA's standpoint is, and working with, you know, like collectively working with, whether it be on the federal side, the GovGlam, the private sector, just learning stuff and figuring out, figuring out what we can do and being in compliance and stuff like that, so I am excited to learn, to learn more about it, and that way I can, I can give my input and, you know, you know, give my standpoint on certain things and just go from there, yeah, really.
All right, thank you for that. And in regards to conflict of interest, I know you're a businessman, you, your business is flowwater, and so, how do you, how can you guard against conflict of interest, you know, as a businessperson and then as a board member?
Right, so it'd be just to basically recuse myself from anything, you know, that puts me in that position, I basically just let the other board members know, you know, the chairman, administrator, and I personally wouldn't wanna be in those positions, so it'd just be easy just to recuse myself and, you know, go from there, yeah.
Well, thank you for responding to those questions, and again, thank you for stepping up, and we look forward to your confirmation, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
And thank you for everyone for being here. So, the committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Monday, April seventeenth. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, it can be dropped off the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building, or email to office@senatorparas.org. The committee will now take a brief recess before we move on to the next agenda item. Sierra mase, everyone. Buenas en half a day, the committee is back from recess. So in regards to the second item of the agenda, we received notification that the nominee, Juan Carlo Pangolin, sent a letter to the governor's office to withdraw his nomination. So we are gonna move on to the third item of the agenda, which is to hear testimony on bill number eleven dash thirty-seven COR, sponsored by Senator Joe Sinagastin, co-sponsored by Senator Roy Kanata, Senator Duane Siniklas, it's an Act to Men, Section thirty-three zero-nine A of Chapter Three, Division One, Title XI, Guam Code annotated, relative to including retail businesses with large investments, the list of exemptions within the population limitations for new alcohol beverage control licenses. I'd like to, sorry, for notices of today's public hearing, we're sent to Chairman, Chairwoman of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, Lisa Fisher, the Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation, Attorney General of Guam, Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Director of the Public Health and Social Services, and the Chief Executive Officer of the Guam Economic Development Authority. Executive Officer of the Guam Economic Development Authority. Fiscal note was received February 3rd from BBMR. It states that with additional issuance of off-sale general licenses to these retail businesses with large investments, the intent is to stimulate economic activity. And per the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the bill is operational in nature and does not change fees nor impose significant administrative costs in its implementation or enforcement should the bill become law. Additionally, DRT expects only one applicant to avail themselves of this exemption with a potential revenue impact as of fiscal year 2023, one year, new year, one new license at $1,000. And so now we would, I would like to offer the opportunity for the sponsor to open on bill 11-37. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hafa de to all. And for allowing me the opportunity to provide my statement on bill 11-37. Bill 11 intends to amend Guam law relative to including retail businesses with large investment to the list of exemption within the population limitation for new alcohol beverage control license. Today Guam law prohibits the issuance of any new ABC license if it exceeds the provisions of subsection 3309 that allows for one license for every 200 or fraction thereof inhabitants of the municipality the business will be located. According to the 2020 census, the municipality of Tumuni, Tumon-Harmon has 18,489 residents. This means every 200 residents, they are allowed 93 ABC licenses. And we all know today they're, they're beyond that. But, but they're reducing as because back then it was allowed. With 1,000 businesses that are located in that municipality, they are definitely above the threshold. However, bill 11 will offer an opportunity for investors who wish to build a business on Guam, an exemption to attain an off-sale general license that requires, one, an investment of 1 million or more in the building of their business, and two, they must employ no less than 50 individuals. This license shall not be, shall be non-transferable. Madam Chair, this will multiply layers of benefit to our island. We will have investments in our construction industry, employment of our residents, and BBT returns, all resulting in a revolving circular economy effect. I look forward to the testimony and ask for your support in reporting out this bill from the committee at the earliest point. Sidois Masi, and again for hearing this bill and for all who offered their testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I'd like to call on members of the public to provide testimony. So on the sign-up sheet, we have Deputy Director Marie Lozama, we have Tom Shimizu as well, if you don't mind coming up to the table, and also Natoshi Hyama. We'll begin with Deputy Director. And please, before you provide testimony, we can record your name. So Deputy, you're recognized.
Hafa de and good morning, Senator Perez, Senator Duñez, Senator Lujan, Senator Sinicolas, Senator Sinagastin, and Senator Canata. My name is Marie Lozama, and I am the Deputy Director at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And basically, my testimony today pretty much reiterates what was just read from the BBMR fiscal note. And that is, this bill proposes to exempt retail businesses with large investments to qualify and apply for alcohol beverage control licenses. We really only expect a few applicants to avail themselves of this exemption over the next 15 months. The bill is operational in nature, does not change fees or impose significant administrative costs in its implementation or enforcement should the bill become law. And as mentioned earlier, we expect that likely one license, you know, will, will be realized in this fiscal year, and that'll be at $1,000. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If we can stay for questions by the panel later or by my colleagues. Next, if you can state your name, the next one to her, yeah.
Hafa de, everybody. My name is Naritoshi Hyama, Director of Pan Pacific Retail Management of Guam, the operator and investor of Village of Donki, Don Don Donki, which is under construction at the intersection of 10A and 1A Drive. So we started this project, ground broke, February 2020, and right after we ground broke, COVID hit. So, but nevertheless, we continued to develop the project, and then we are hoping to open our store by the end of October this year or within this year. And so, but after we have, you know, recently, we have just realized that we are not able to get liquor off-sale general license. But by the time, you know, we decided to invest on this project, we didn't know this. But now, you know, we are, you know, not allowed to sell liquors. But so we, I mean, bring a lot of new businesses here on Guam. For example, we are committed to hire around, create 300 new employments on Guam. We also have 15 tenants, and I, we expect that each tenant would hire at least 10 employees. We also have a lot of indirect employment that we create. For example, we work with janitorial companies, we work with security companies, we also purchase a lot of products from wholesalers of the local Guam companies. And then direct and indirect employment we create through this project, we estimate that it will be more than 600 employees, new job creation. Also, we are now working with art company Kaha to contribute to promote art in Guam. We also, our expected annual revenue, we estimate that around 100 million us dollars. So GRT itself, we, you know, pay 5 million us dollars. It doesn't include our corporate income taxes or the income tax paid by our employees and so on. We also bring a lot of new products, especially we bring a lot of Japanese products, and including that, we would like to also promote new Japanese alcohol beverages, which are not existent in Guam. For example, whiskey, Japanese hakeys, and to serve to the Guam community. But with it, without this bill amendment, we are not also able to bring these products. Also, you know, our estimated revenue is based on that we could sell alcohol beverage. And without this bill amended, maybe we cannot maybe sustain more revenues and we, meaning that we would pay less taxes to the Guam. Maybe, you know, because, to be honest, our basement floor is around, retail basement floor is more than 50,000 square feet where we try to promote liquor beverage selling. But so where we also need to hire a lot of people, but if we are not able to sell liquor, these, you know, we cannot create this employment to sell liquors. And that's why, you know, our expected revenues and then taxes payment and creation of the employment would be, I would say that 20 to 30% reduced from our plan. And so I hope that we could get this bill amended so that we could also sell liquors and create new job employment and tax revenue to the government of Guam, and to bring something new to the citizens of Guam. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hyama. Next, I'd like to recognize Tom Shimizu.
Yeah, Tom Shimizu. Good morning, Senators. I, I'm just here to support, I support the, the bill. Yes, I'm, I work at a wholesaler and he's a potential customer, but for me, I'm always going to support things that are good for business. And any restrictions, I'm always, I always feel like we need to do what we can to eliminate those. So, I mean, if you amended the bill to make the investment threshold in a building even lower, I would not oppose it. I would actually support that. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes your testimony. Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony that's here? Okay, so I guess we'll move on to questions. I would like to offer the floor to the sponsor if he has any questions or which wants to reserve it for closing. Okay, okay, great. So one of the things is, you know, investment versus valuation. Maybe this question is for the Deputy Director. Do you see any issues with using investment in the bill versus valuation of property as far as one of the thrash, the triggers to allow for being granted alcohol license?
Gosh, I'm sorry. I, I don't have an answer for you just yet on that, but I can get back to you if that's okay.
Yeah, because potentially, I don't know if you can check with your legal counsel that it might violate the equal protection clause if it's based solely on investment rather than valuation.
I will.
I guess a question for Mr. Hyama. So in the bill, it states that 50 employees, the bill would require that the, the business seeking this license above the cap invest a hun, a million, over a million, a million or more dollars and employs 50 employees. Are these employees local employees? Are they, because I understand your company is multinational or international. Or is it your intention that these employees are local?
Our intention is to hire around 300 employees and to sustain, and 90, so I would say that 80 to 90% of our employment would be from locals. But meaning that local doesn't only mean Chamorro people, because there are 30 to 40% of Filipino living here, also islanders, and but locals living on Guam. So we hire 90, 80 to 90% employment would be from locals. And there would be very limited Japanese or visa holders coming to Guam. Currently, our plan, only visa applicants to work under Guam, around 10 people only.
Okay, yeah, the question was more directed, are these employees outside of Guam versus local?
Locals, locals, yes.
Okay.
More than 25, 250 employees will be local.
So the other, the other thing with the increase in, in access to alcohol, what does the company intend to do to ensure the safety of the public? Is there any safeguards in place for that?
Yes. For example, as law states that selling our, hours of liquor is limited. And our intention is that we have two stories buildings, and we plan to sell liquor, alcohol at the basement. So after 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM, we close the basement so, so that customers can no longer access to purchase liquor on our facility. We, our store is 24/7 operation, but we work with security company 24/7 basis so that, you know, also we check ages and so on, so that we don't sell liquor to minors. And then, so I, I think by combination of these, we can, I mean, the secure, secure the safety. Yeah.
And then the other thing is the safe serve. So employees that are serving alcohol have to go through training to ensure that they're not over-serving individuals or making sure that they're not serving underage individuals?
Definitely, you know, we would work with ABC, you know, listen to advice from ABC Board and also provide trainings to sell liquors and also to check the ages before. So we also train our cashiers to check ID or ages before selling liquor so that, you know, we don't sell to minors and those who are not able to purchase. So we would implement these measures so that, you know, we will follow rules and regulations to sell liquor and alcohol on Guam.
Okay. I know we still need to reach out to the mayor in regards to any responses regarding this, because this is a change, right? This is a change in policy where we're increasing the amount of licenses. This question goes to Deputy Director. Are there businesses out there whose establishing establishments have closed and perhaps, you know, that those licenses can then be recycled back into other businesses that are opening, opening up?
In answer to your, the first part of your question, I don't have the number in front of me, but yes, and particularly since, you know, the COVID pandemic, you know, certainly some of the businesses have closed. With regard to the licenses themselves, if I'm not mistaken, what happens is, of course, there is a limit. And once it is vacated, then that's when, you know, we should be able to extend that license to, to another business. But that is, other than that, I don't have actual numbers for you.
So Mr. Hyama, have you sought, perhaps there may be an option to get these licenses, purchasing these licenses? Have you sought that avenue?
We haven't seeked that options because according, I don't, if I, maybe I understand correctly or not, when I read the law, it was written that license is not transferable. And that's why I was thinking that, you know, we didn't saw that option. Also, it's kind of liquor license, according to my understanding, off sale and on sale is, I mean, related to the premises where we sell. That's why, and then I also understand that liquor license is not transfer, is not transferable. This is my understanding. That's why I didn't saw that possibility.
Okay, so maybe perhaps Deputy, is that, can you confirm that?
So, yeah, and maybe I didn't explain it properly. So I believe what happens is, you know, no new licenses can be issued. So it's not that some, you know, a business closes and then we extend that particular license to another business. But perhaps, you know, when it does close, then consideration is made for any new applicants. So I, I'm not sure if I'm explaining that properly. And I apologize that I don't have anybody here from the compliance staff as, you know, they have been actually working on special projects.
So there, perhaps there are licenses that are available at this time. Is that correct? I mean, maybe if you can confirm that?
I wouldn't venture to actually say that. I do know that, you know, the board frequently gets new applications or applicants. And so I, I don't know if perhaps, you know, I, I couldn't actually verify or confirm that right now, that there are available or there is the ability to issue new licenses at this time.
Madam Chair, just, just to advise you, I've spoke to the, the compliance branch. Everywhere, I mean, Tumuning, Tumon, and Agania are the only villages that are over. And the only reason why it was several years back, maybe over 10 years, the board was granting a bunch of license in those areas, and they've exceeded it. They exceeded to the point where you'd have to offload maybe 20 businesses to get to the limit. Just wanted to mention that. Okay?
Senator Sinagastin, is that up to date, that information up to date?
Before I introduce the bill, that's correct. I, I can verify again later on today, but the numbers are just too high. And Tumuning, Tumon, Harmon, and Agania, those are only two villages that are over the limit. Everybody else has plenty room.
Okay, so maybe we can get confirmation on that number from the compliance in, in writing. I appreciate that. Okay, I've seen you come to the front. Mr. Duñez, did you want to have a, do you want to testify on the bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for the delay in coming up. I, I did want to provide some comments. did want to provide some comments in support of the bill and some of the questions that, that you have raised so far leads to more discussion. As far as the bill as, as it's written, it's very focused on, on a company that makes an investment over a certain amount and has a number of employees and expand and allowing that as an exception. Now, when we took, when we take a look at the licensing for alcohol establishments, as you, as noted in the bill, it's based on population of each village. Now, when we take a look at Tumon and Tumuning and Dedido, which is the largest, of course, they have the largest number of licenses. But keep in mind that when we talk about Tumon and Tumuning in particular, these are tourist attractions for us. To base a number of licenses just on permanent residents within their, within the village does not take into account that at one time we had 1.6 million tourists visiting Guam and patronizing businesses in Tumuning and Tumon, among other villages as well. They went outside the villages, certainly. So to limit it just to the number of residences, residents in smaller villages makes sense. You don't want 15 bars in Mariso, and you don't want 15 bars in Sina Hanya. That's why it makes sense to have that limitation based on population. But when you're talking about economic drivers within Guam and tourism being our number one industry, military personnel probably being our number two, visiting Tumon, visiting Tumuning, visiting Dedido, visiting Agania, we have to recognize that we need to take a look at it as what the market will bear at that point. So saying it's just for a business that is going to invest over a million dollars really does nothing for the market. Couple of compromises is to get rid of it. It really is an arcane bill or an arcane law. The number of licenses that you have should be mandated by the free market. No one's going to open up 15 bars in Yumatic because there's no population there to support it. Let the market mandate how many establishments can be there. Another alternative would be to treat Tumon, Tumuning, perhaps Dedido, perhaps Agania as special economic zones that are exempted from the number of license restrictions. So that it recognizes that we do have these 1.6 million tourists, hopefully one day again soon, and we do have these military, and then, and then it is no longer a problem. Now, now, in, in comment to your question regarding are there licenses out there that are not being used, I'll give you an example because it's not, it's not just a situation exclusive to Guam. New York City is notorious for restrictions on liquor licenses, that there's a limited number of licenses that are, that are allowed. When somebody new wants to come in, those licenses cannot be obtained from, from the government. So there's a secondary market for liquor licenses. Businesses that may have closed down, no longer in business, but they maintain their alcohol beverage license. True, it is not transferable, but if I have a business and somebody wants to come in, it's like, I can't sell you my, my liquor license, but I can sell you my business, and my business has a liquor license, and they're worth something. So this bar that I want to sell you may only be worth $10,000 in equipment and property, but this license is very, very valuable. So you're going to pay me a premium. So it's going to, it creates a, a secondary, I don't want to say it, it's more of a gray market if anything else. And it, there's no reason to have it. It drives up the cost for people wanting to get into the business. It, it acts as a barrier to entry that is not necessary, and it's not something that the government should be, should be overly concerned with. You let the market decide the size of the market. As far as public safety goes, yes, we, we, all the bars and all the stores are responsible for self, safe service, getting their health certificate. They go through a training on how to serve safely. You, you enforce the 21 and over only. You do not serve people who, who are, who are inebriated. But when you talk about, oh, more, more licenses, more bars in a certain area are going to create more public safety issues, possibly. But whether you have four bars in a, in a area or whether you have 10 bars, that you still have the same number of drinkers. There's a certain number, there's a certain, there's a finite number. If there's, if there's a ship in town, maybe they'll hit every other bar or they'll stay longer at a bar. But, but certainly, it, it's not directly correlated. There are some issues as far as public safety. It's the responsibility of the establishment to make sure that they follow the law and make sure that they, they operate with the highest standards as far as monitoring. But I think, I think the bill is a good bill. I think, I think it should be considered. But I think, in, in reality, I think we need to take a look at the overall scheme of limitations on alcohol licenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duennius. And you brought up actually an interesting point because although currently there's one vendor that's interested in, that would basically benefit from this bill. But, you know, this is a codified, this is codified in law, which means it affects any village, really. I mean, if there's a developer that wants to develop in Yumatic, you know, puts up a million dollars, employs 50 people, you know, that's going to change the fabric of that community. So I think that's something to think about. It's not just benefiting this one company, but what it would do to the rest of the island should we have these, you know, businesses that can, that have that money. So this is something that we have to weigh as policymakers.
I agree with you. I think, I think when you, when you, when you start talking about it affects all villages, you're right, it does affect all villages. If you have a, a company coming in wanting to invest a million dollars to put a large facility down in Yumatic or Mariso, yes, that, that's caused, that does cause problems. But the market dictates, is someone really going to want to put, invest a million dollars for a large facility? And there are other mechanisms for controlling such developments as far as land use and approval by municipal councils, getting, getting the correct licenses from, or use from, from a territorial land use commission or those other things. So there are, there are mechanisms to control oversized or projects that would unduly tax the infrastructure of a certain village, the least of which is an alcohol license. So in that sense, I think the, the market, the market will dictate where it makes sense and where it's economically feasible, rather than us saying, no, 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 you can't do it. And you're right, it does affect, and, but that doesn't preclude us from setting up special economic zones in Tumon and Tumuning where we know that those are where our, our number one and number two economic drivers are drawn to.
All right, thank you so much. I see we have Director Ariola. If you, were you here to give testimony? Forty-seven, okay. All right. All right. I think I would like to offer, open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Luhan, if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, panel. Oh, I wholeheartedly agree with, of course, Mr. Duennius's assessment in the archaic bill that we have right now. And actually, just a few weeks ago, had opportunity to tour Camp Bloss. And, you know, one of the things that we don't want the outside of the gate to turn into a red light district, we definitely do not want that. But we, we do encourage higher end businesses like, like a Dave and Buster's and things of that nature and, you know, more upscale entities. And actually, the Admiral times says, you know, these businesses are going to thrive over here. And so that being said, that's one of the things to consider in regards to maybe even a zoning situation because these, yeah, you're talking about Tumuning, Dedido, these areas are the economic zone of Guam at this point. And the bill, you know, the regulation served its purpose for the time, but it's time to, to now rethink that and redo that based on population and the growth and our anticipation. And this is the time to do it. This is kind of a downtime, and this is the time to redo that. But let me ask, I didn't get your, your last name, Mr.?
Hayama.
Yama?
Yes.
Mr. Yama, your, your licensure is for off, off sale, right? Off sale? Off sale or on sales?
Both. So basically, we are retailer. So we definitely need off sale general license as a retailer. But we also plan to operate our restaurant. Also, according to my understanding of the law, exception is made to the restaurant and hotel. Those who have made certain amount of investment, those which hotels have at least 20 rooms and so on. And we are basically a retailer, but we also operate a restaurant. So we plan to open a sushi restaurant. So, you know, it's kind of sushi ring, and then we have, you have a tablet in front of your, like here, and then you tap on it, and then, so your order will be delivered by the train in front of you. You take it, and this is kind of, you know, rapid train sushi, you know, restaurant. So we are doing this restaurant business, you know, Southeast Asian countries. We have already more than 10 restaurants where we would like to also, maybe some people would prefer to drink, I don't know, beer or sake along with sushi. And so that's why we would also like to have a limited on sale license. So we don't sell any hard liquor. So we don't need maybe on sale general license, but we also would like to have on sale beer, wine.
My understanding too, that you're, you're, you're going to have a counter. Is everybody all right?
Yes.
You're going to have a counter to be able to check bags in, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Would that, that be for the airlines, right? I mean, for an airline?
Yes, so we also have United Airlines. So we are discussing with you a checking counter.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And so some of your, I'm sure a good portion of your, your off sale premises will be for, for folks who want to buy liquor and take it with them.
Yes.
Yeah, so you'll be able to package that for them and, and they'll be able to pick it up at their final destination, right?
Yes, definitely. So not only United Airlines checking counter, we also in communication with a lot of, I mean, transportation company, including but not limited, Miki Taxi, Happy Rent a Car, also JTB, Lam Lam Rest Shuttles. So that, you know, those who live in Tamuning, Tamon Hotel areas, you know, usually Japanese, they don't drive a car. They take passenger shuttles. And then we are working with also hotel industry to bring tourists come to our store, and they can check in. They can do last minute purchasing. And then we have, we provide food costs where you can have a lot of new tenants, more than half tenants or something new to Guam. We also provide lounge services. So it's kind of, we are also kind of touristic destination. And you're right that purchase liquor and checking and then go to the airport to fly to Japan.
Okay. Likewise, you, you said you were going to have addition, 15 additional vendors in there?
I mean, we have 15 tenants.
15 tenants, yeah, 15 tenants. Now, let me ask you, those 15 tenants, and, you know, they may have a little restaurant too or something, or a food outlet, and they, and they may want to sell beer as well. Would this licensure apply to them? Because maybe they, maybe they don't have the, the million dollar investment. Like Mr. Shimizu says, you know, he likes to lower that as well. And I agree with that. But I mean, would, 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 and maybe this is to the author, if there, if you had a vendor in there that didn't have a million dollar investment but wants to open a, not a sushi bar, a sandwich bar, but, but, but wants to sell beer as well, but the investment is not a billion dollars, could he piggyback on your million dollar investment to be able to, to also sell, also sell beer? Because I, I would hate to see somebody else that, who could not get a license now because they did not, you know, within, within your premise as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yes, I understand your question that. So we have 15 tenants, and then out of 15, two tenants are known food, other 13 tenants are food provider. And there will be several kind of eating restaurant, like pepper lunch or something like that, you know. So it is true that, I'm not sure how much investment they would create, but yes, it is true.
Yeah, no, but, you know, if they wanted to sell beer as well, and, and I'm sure, you know, repeat customers, hey, well, I had sushi yesterday, now I want to go to this other one.
Yes.
But I also want to have a beer as, as well. I would hate for, in the same place, only one, only one place would be able to sell beer and the other one not being able to because they didn't have the initial investment.
In, in that case, it's, and our tenants may complain to us, why you're only selling, you know, allowed to sell and then we are not.
Yeah. I mean, because, you know, as Mr. Shimizu was saying, you know, a million dollars is, is nothing for a big, big box, yours, but, you know, we, we come together. We can't even put $50,000 together. But we may want to open a, you know, a little thing and, and sell a couple beers, right? You know, but that, that's equivalent to a million dollars for us.
Yeah, I, I understand your point because, you know, our investment is, you know, not million, 100 million. That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's all I got. But I, I agree with Mr. 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 Duennius's assessment in regards to our archaic situation that we have right now. But we should seriously consider upgrading again, whether it be zoning and all that, and looking at the economic drivers and entities that we have here, here in our island. And this is the time to do it. This is kind of like a downtime to be able to do that. And I think in, in that regard, again, when, when they look at that, you know, I, I think it would stir up more, more business opportunities when they, when they look at, look at that, you know, we don't know how many folks come out here without meeting with government officials and saying that, you know, they're looking at investing. We don't know how many of those folks that are silent, just looking around and, and just asking folks, and maybe turned off by some of the archaic situations that we have here, and just leave an island without even inquiring whether it's possible or not. You know, I, you know, those numbers are not tracked. But you're, you're absolutely right with that. It served its purpose, and it's, it's time to, to re, I think redo that statute in regards to that. But with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Luhan. Senator Duennius, if you have any questions?
Seidir, Madam Chair. No, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank the panel for being here. I concur with my colleague, Senator Luhan. I think that Mr. Duennius and Mr. Shimizu and what's been brought forward is, is correct. And just to add to what Senator Luhan was talking about, I've met with certain individuals associated with the buildup in surrounding areas. And what they're excited about is on the list of top restaurants and retail outlets that, that are folks that frequent these areas that are going to be coming in as part of the buildup, we have, I believe, nine, nine of the 11, you know, restaurants and stores and things that, that, that these individuals patronize. And so it's really already here, but it's just a matter of updating the law. And as Mr. Duennius has put out, that, you know, I think that, you know, we really need to revisit that, a market-driven approach. And as has been stated, there's other restrictions. But, you know, look at your, your restaurants, your Applebee's, your, you know, your IHOPs, your other things, I mean, the steak houses, they're already here. And so it really, really is going to be incumbent upon us to relook at. But this bill at least is a starter for it, and I do support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank you all for coming in and giving your testimony. I too like to have the market dictate, you know, growth to, you know, and situations out there. And I like that, removing as much restrictions as possible. Sir, I'd like to thank you for investing in our island and bringing something new. I wish you and our people continued cooperation and success. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you. Thank you.
Senator, thank you, Senator Siniklas, sorry, I need coffee. Senator Kanata?
How free, thank you, guys. As the oversight for economic development, I definitely support this bill's intent, especially as a co-sponsor. I think as an, this is a huge economic investment. There obviously is a lot of interest in the alcohol and sales, and I think your business can very much sure, invest in a lot of security measures to ensure that there's no illegal activity or whatnot. So again, I support this endeavor and this bill and hope for it to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. Senator Sanagastin, first of it, I have some questions, actually.
I have some.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess the, the concern I have is that it is going to be in law, codified in law, should this bill pass, and it could potentially change the fabric of a neighborhood. The thing is, a million dollars, so I was told that gas stations, it, you know, just the licenses themselves can cost quite a bit of money, and it potentially approximates a million dollars. So, you know, if this bill does come to fruition, it could rapidly change the fabric of our communities. And so perhaps, you know, there could be other mechanisms in which we can take a look, perhaps having the residents, so within residential zones, so obviously the permits or licenses can be given to specifically zoned areas, right? The concern is if we have increases of licenses in residential areas, and I would like to look at that as an alternate way to regulate this, rather than just leave it up to the market. I think it's important to have, you know, the community weigh in as far as having more liquor licenses in their community. If they're, you know, perhaps having the Guam Land Use Commission get involved, if there is a proposed business within a thousand feet of residential zone areas. So I know the particular location would, of this, of your business, right, is, I'm not sure exactly what the distance is from a residentially zoned area, but I think it's important to have more awareness within that community regarding this.
Our, you know, development zone is commercial, but behind our, I mean, residence is R2 zone, so multiple residential zones adjacent to our facility, back of the house side. So, but our property itself is commercial.
Yes, Senator Perez, if I may, I think there are safeguards already because the zoning laws and rules, like you could not put a bar or a gas station in a residential zoned area, in a commercial zone, absolutely, but obviously the study has been done that says, you know what, it makes sense to make this area in a village commercially zone. So I think it, it can affect the whole island, but again, there are other safeguards with the zoning, the zoning rules and regulations. And then again, fair and open market, you know, they're gonna put things where it makes sense, not where it doesn't. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that response. All right, so I'd like to then recognize Senator Sanagastin for any questions and closing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to maybe clear up the air a little bit for my colleagues and for the people of Guam. If you look at the bill, the bill is only referring to off sale. On sale, and the gentleman mentioned it, they intend to apply for, because it's a restaurant, there's, there's no restriction on restaurants. You can have as many restaurants, you can have a hundred restaurants all lined up together, and they can all get an ABC license, because that's how it's set up. But when you come to off sale, there's a restriction, that's where the limit is at. That's where, on many occasions, or on all occasions, when everybody applies for an ABC license, they gotta go to the mayor. The mayor's gotta say, good to go, put it there. I like to have that store there, that retail store, and allow them to sell off sale. But then, because of the restrictions today, the off sale's not possible. As a general license, you can have an off sale for just beer or just wine. The restriction is there. But this, and then when it was mentioned about the impact throughout the island, I don't know how many people anywhere around the island is going to drop a million dollars investment. There's not that many, and there's been enough activists out on the island that they won't do development in Chalampau or Pago Bay area, they won't do anything down in Ague, maybe if we're lucky, maybe in Iran, there may be an industry that would ask to sell alcohol. But then again, the limit down south, it'll probably take many industries to reach that limit on the off sale, the on sale, and everything else. But today, this happens to impact specifically Tumuning area. The two villages that are exceeded their limit is Legania and Tumuning, Tumon, Harmon. And the reason why I'm very familiar with this for, for my colleagues is that I used to be the chief compliance supervisor for revenue and tax, so I had to go and inspect all the businesses. And when Mr. Duñez mentioned about some businesses, they're really only worth ten thousand, actually some of them are even worth even less than ten thousand. They're what they call a hole in the wall. We would inspect them and we would say, aye, you're open? Yes, sir. We see they got a valid ABC license, alcohol license. But what they're doing is, they're trying to sell their business because it comes as a package. And the value of the business, I know for a fact, because I seen this in the market when I was the compliance, they were selling for thirty or forty thousand dollars a business. The equipment in there is not even worth a thousand dollars, I know that, I was looking at it. Most of them are surplus items. But that was the industry. Before I introduce this bill, just to let everybody understand, I wanted to lift the restriction because only Tumuning, Tumon, Harmon, and Ague are the only ones restricted. A very good example, Moses, I think it's Moses the name that's down here, it used to be in Tumon, they wanted to transfer to Ague, they couldn't because of the restriction. Two different villages, you can't go between villages because of the population's restriction. And that's one of the factors, but then when we looked at this one, we said, wait, Tumuning is still growing. They have many industries, there's plenty commercial land here, and they're gonna build, one business is building. And they asked, is there any way we can get a restriction or a change in the law so we can off sale? That's all it's all about, that's all this bill's about, off sale. And I really hope the business will reach out to our local business, our wholesalers, and buy everything they got, because why? You're gonna be one of the major industries here, no different like Harmon, Home Depot does. But I don't believe your business is gonna run out anybody's, but, you know, we're gonna all have fun. But other than that, this bill is only about off sale, there's no restrictions on anything else. And the million or, the million dollars or more, if there was an introduction to reduce it to less than a million, I have no problem with that one. We were shooting at a million because when you look, when you look at today's market, anything you build, even a home, already you're almost a million dollars. Five hundred thousand, you're not that far away from a million. Fifty employees, gosh, that's probably just the people that are gonna be moving the carts of the store today. I think the one, one business that's gonna be open, they're automatically gonna hire three hundred people. I expect that to probably grow in the months ahead, and that has the multiple multiplier effect to the economy. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd hope the bill can, we can get a transcription and put it out in the committee on the rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sanagastin. If there are no further testimonies, the committee will receive written testimony until four PM, April fifteenth, April seventeenth. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparrez.org. We will now take a brief recess and before we move on to the next item. Señor Massey, thank you. Sutus Masi, thank you. Okay, just let them know we're going to start. If you don't mind. What is this? Is the Zoom ready? The Zoom ready? It's ready? Buenos, welcome back. The committee is back from recess. We're on our fourth item on the agenda. To hear testimony for Bill 47-37COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. Augustine, co-sponsored by Senator Dwayne Siniklas, Roy Canata and William Parkinson. It's an act to repeal Articles 7 and 8 of Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 26304, to repeal Section 26601, see and 26608, all of Articles 6, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 26305 of Article 3, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to excise taxes for alcoholic beverages and tobacco taxes. We did invite the Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation, Attorney General, Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Director of Public Health and Social Services, as well as Kida. The fiscal note that we received states that revenues collected from the cigarette-stamped tax law are to be deposited in the Healthy Futures Fund. Should the legislation become enacted, repealing the cigarette-stamped tax law and subsequent removal of the bonded warehouse provisions may result in reduced revenue collections for the deposit into the Healthy Futures Fund. Utilizing information from prior fiscal years to obtain data from overall revenues generated, the Bureau notes that the average collections relative to tax collections from 2019 to 2022 is estimated at 38.6 million. However, absent information from Department of Revenue and Taxation relative to tax collections from the cigarette-stamped tax laws and the bonded warehouse provisions, the Bureau is unable to ascertain the fiscal impact of repealing these mandates. So we do have, I just want to offer the floor to the sponsor of the bill to provide introductory remarks. Senator S. Augustine, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues and to the people of Guam watching. The bill intends to improve collections of excess tax on tobacco. The Governor of Guam made numerous efforts to implement the cigarette-stamped tax law since 2017, but it has failed due to funding and procurement issues, corruption, losses and other factors. I don't even know where it's going now. With repeating the law, we eliminate any issues dealing with uncollected taxes on tobacco and pushing wholesalers to pay the taxes owed upfront when the products arrive on Guam's port. In November of 2019, the Office of Public Accountability issued an OPA report number 19-07, which clearly provided an alarm on the opportunity for tax evasion under reporting of wholesalers. OPA stated that DRT has not established rules, regulations or formal policies to certify or monitor bonded warehouses, nor does the agency have the personnel or training to ensure accountability. DRT has relied on the volunteer compliance of wholesalers for over 60 years with no identifiable benefit to the Governor of Guam. That's from the OPA report, okay? So wholesalers should pay tobacco taxes when products are released by customs and quarantine, and any products for export or consignment are a drawback where the burden of proof is upon the taxpayer. This will capture lost excess tax that would have otherwise gone under reporting. Public Auditor B.J. Cruz estimated as much as 10 million to 15 million in uncollected taxes back when they did the audit. That is unacceptable. Amendments were made to the bill to ensure that the intent will be properly vetted. I know that we have the OPA here and I would hope that he would be able to testify first before anybody else. If anything, okay, he'll be last. But please understand that the introduction of this bill was because of the OPA report, because of the under-reporting. And hopefully today, being a former Department of Revenue and Tax employee, that the department can shed light to what's going on in reference to the tobacco, because I know the tobacco stamp is not, actually is not going anywhere or it's hopefully will be moving. It's been ready now two years. I know that the Deputy's probably going to say, she's received several calls from me and where are we at? And I'd only ask those questions, not being the oversight for revenue and tax, but being the oversight for appropriation. When we're dealing in money, my office will be looking at it and asking all those questions. And with that, Madam Chair, I look forward to any recommendations and suggestions on the bill and the support from my colleagues. Sutus Masi, thank you.
Sutus Masi, Senator S. Augustine. So at this time, I'd like to actually recognize those that are going to provide testimony on Zoom or virtually, that is. So the first person we have is Cynthia Al. She's with the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network from Hawaii. Cynthia, you're recognized for your testimony.
Thank you. Cynthia Al, Government Relations Director for Hawaii and Guam from the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. Thank you, Honorable Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson and committee members for giving me the opportunity to comment on Bill Number 47-37. The American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, is a nonprofit, nonpartisan advocacy affiliate of the American Cancer Society. We support evidence-based policy and legislative solutions designed to eliminate cancer as a major health problem, investing in comprehensive policies and best practices that strengthen Guam's health infrastructure to prevent youth tobacco use and to help adults addicted to tobacco quit. Despite declining smoking rates, tobacco use remains the leading preventable cause of death in Guam and the United States. Guam still has one of the highest smoking rates among the states and territories, and smokeless tobacco use is nearly double the U.S. rate. Tobacco-related diseases are a major cause of death in Guam and contribute significantly to healthcare costs. Tobacco control policies such as tax collections are closely associated with reductions in smoking and smokeless tobacco use. Every state that has significantly increased cigarette taxes has seen positive drops in cigarette sales and consumption. Collecting taxes help keep prices high, which prevents youth from starting to use tobacco products and help adults to quit. We commend Guam for recognizing that there is an issue of enforcing cigarette-stamped tax collections, but repealing the cigarette tax stamp will not address the concern of underpayment of taxes and compliance by wholesalers. ACS CAN is concerned with the repeal of the cigarette-stamped tax law as it is proven strategy to trace products that have had their taxes paid. Repealing the law would make it more difficult to enforce tax collections and reduce accountability and record keeping. Instead, we recommend addressing the issue of unpaid taxes entering Guam by collecting taxes on tobacco products upon entry and applying the cigarette stamp at the time of discharge from the carrier. We also suggest removing bonded warehouses that prevent wholesalers from being accountable to pay tobacco excises taxes currently. This will address the issue of any unpaid taxes entering Guam. Currently allowing tobacco products to sit in bonded warehouses prevents wholesalers from being accountable to pay tobacco taxes and difficult for agencies to account for taxes collected. Furthermore, the cigarette stamp tax is critical in reducing any illicit trade activities. Evidence-based tobacco prevention policies like the cigarette-stamped tax law are essential to healthy communities and decreasing the economic cost of tobacco-related diseases. Cancer mortality data highlights the critical importance of further reducing tobacco use in Guam. By implementing comprehensive policies and best practices, we can reduce the toll of preventable cancer and chronic diseases in Guam. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important matter, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Cynthia, for your testimony. We will have opened up the panel for questions, but we'll just hear testimony first. So I'd like to recognize Marisha Artero Perez, who's reading on behalf of Dr. Annette David. So Marisha, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. Hafadeh, everyone. Marisha Artero Perez, again, presenting the testimony of Dr. Annette David. She does send her regrets that she was not able to do this in person. Her testimony reads, "Honorable Senators, I submit this written testimony in my capacity as a public health physician, working in global tobacco control for over three decades now. During this time, the world has solidified the evidence for sound tobacco control strategies and policy initiatives. One key lesson learned and demonstrated in multiple countries is that increasing tobacco taxes is good for health and good for the economy. Raising tobacco taxes to increase prices is highly effective in reducing tobacco use and preventing young people from starting. We have seen this demonstrated in our Guam data, and the evidence is replicated across the Asia-Pacific region and the rest of the world. Raising taxes also confers a fiscal benefit by raising government revenues. When the tax revenues are directed to fund prevention programs and healthcare, the benefits are amplified. The key elements are levying taxes that raise the prices of tobacco products sufficiently to outpace inflation and economic growth, applying these taxes, excuse me, to all tobacco products and ensuring a system for efficient collection and tracking. The intent of Bill 47-37 to increase the efficiency of tax collection on tobacco and alcohol products is a good one, because increasing the prices of these products through taxation has proven to be an effective intervention to reduce harmful use, thereby reducing the adverse health outcomes linked to tobacco and alcohol, while simultaneously contributing to increase government revenues for the Healthy Futures Fund. Doing away with the bonded warehouses and collecting taxes on all tobacco and alcohol products as soon as they arrive in Guam is also a good strategy to streamline tax collection and ensure that all wholesalers of these products are equitably levied the requisite taxes. However, repealing the law requiring tax stamps would be counterproductive for the government of Guam and for our island community. Tobacco tax stamps are an enforcement mechanism intended to facilitate the ability to track and trace tobacco products and confirm the payment of applicable taxes. They are supposed to support the Department of Revenue and Taxation in its ability to account for which products have legitimately paid the mandated taxes. Removing the requirement for tobacco tax stamps will make it more difficult for DRT to perform its duties. Tax stamps also prevent illicit trade in tobacco products. A prevalent concern for our island leaders is how to curb the entry of illegal and therefore untaxed tobacco and alcohol products into Guam. Tax stamps help to address this problem by ensuring a clear and visual confirmation of which products have entered the island legally and had taxes paid. Without tax stamps, there would not be an easy way to identify illicit products. One issue has been the lack of bidders for the printing of tax stamps. The International Tax Stamp Association identifies several companies with the capacity to provide tax stamps that conform to the global and national standards. I have attached a list of these companies. Several of these companies have Asia-Pacific branches and a number are U.S. companies. If the issue is a lack of bidders, surely the logical move would be to reach out to these established companies for the service and not limit the bidding to local printing vendors rather than dismantling a good law. As Chair of the Guam State Epidemiological Outcomes Work Group, I have overseen Guam's prevention data for 20 years now. While smoking rates have declined significantly over this time, with the declines happening in conjunction with sound tobacco control policies such as tax increases, Guam still has the highest smoking prevalence among all U.S. states and territories. We need to strengthen our tobacco control interventions by increasing tobacco taxes further, enhancing tax collection efficiency and maintaining good laws that support improved tobacco tax collection, such as the tobacco tax stamp law. I am deeply appreciative of the leadership, encouraged that our senators in this and previous legislatures have demonstrated when promoting tobacco control laws that are backed by good evidence. I support the removal of bonded warehouses for tobacco and alcohol products. However, I strongly urge our senators to keep the requirement for tobacco tax stamps, a policy that is supported by the World Health Organization, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the U.S. Department of Treasury and the National Cancer Institute. Sincerely, Dr. Annette David. Dr. David has also included her email address and contact numbers in the event you want to reach out to her with specific questions. Thank you so much.
Sutus Masi, Marisha, for the testimony provided on behalf of Dr. David. So I now like to recognize the Deputy Director Lozama to provide testimony.
Hafadeh again and good morning, Senator Perez and committee members. Whenever legislation is passed that relates to taxes, our agency's responsibility is to ensure that we comply with its mandates. With that said, please allow me to provide some insight into the two areas highlighted in Bill 47-37, both of which have presented some challenges to our being able to do this effectively. And I'd just like to go into a brief explanation of what the bonded process is. So tobacco taxes are not paid at the ports. Prior to a shipment's arrival, the Department of Revenue and Taxation is provided with a tracer form that includes inventory details. After Customs authenticates the information and releases the shipment to the distributor, we are advised. The business privileged team, too, is sent to the location, the shrink wrap is removed, and inventory is taken. So that's when the initial shipment arrives. Now, visits, subsequent visits are usually requested by wholesalers between Monday through Thursday and sometimes on a Friday if a company has an additional shipment. So the two employees leave the office around 9:00 a.m., return for their scheduled one-hour lunch break, and then go back to the warehouse or to another company's scheduled visit. They usually conclude around 4:30 p.m. It is estimated that they are out for anywhere from approximately three to six and a half hours a day, depending upon the size of the container, the total amount of products to be deposited or withdrawn, how many visits are scheduled and if there is any expired inventory that needs to be destroyed. In short, this is basically a full-time process for the employees. And despite that, some of the wholesalers will likely feel that we aren't doing enough. So that is with the bonded warehouses. With regard to the cigarette stamps, the law was passed in 2017. An invitation for bid was issued. There was a single bid, and that failed. The bidder did not lodge a protest. As we contemplated how to move forward, our discussions involved some speculation that perhaps the size of business was such that it did not attract more companies to submit bids or that perhaps a wide enough net was not cast. In addition to issuing yet another IFB, we also considered possible alternatives in the event of yet another failed bid. I should say that the Attorney General's Office assisted with that IFB and encumbered approximately $60,000 for the startup in the event that a bid would have been awarded. It is important to note that there is no provision in the law for funding beyond that. We have been informed by the Attorney General's Office that the startup funds are no longer available, thus leaving our agency with having to encumber that amount for a new IFB that was recently submitted to the GSA. Our agency recognizes the need to carry out services that help to stand up the economy. And in fact, and we do our best to comply. I do recall, prior to my coming to the agency, there was a story that shortly after the emergency declaration had been issued, our staff was actually out there conducting bonded warehouse inventory. In addition to administering the bonded warehouse requirements, our staff also handle used tax and provide other BPT services. As mentioned earlier, DRT's role is simply to ensure that we comply with mandates. Whether Bill 47-37 is passed in its original form or as a modified version of it, we respectfully ask that careful consideration is made in all areas. we respectfully ask that careful consideration is made in all areas so that we are better able to do our jobs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Director, for your testimony. I'd like to recognize the Director of Guam Behavior Health, Director Ariola, for her testimony. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Senators. I submitted a testimony to your offices, and I'm not sure if you've gotten copies, but I will go ahead and proceed with my testimony, which is very short and sweet. Guam Behavior Health and Wellness Center supports the intent of the bill to increase the efficiency of tax collection on tobacco and alcohol products, because increasing the prices of these products through taxation has proven to be an effective intervention to reduce harmful use of these products and to improve health outcomes while simultaneously contributing to the increased government revenues for the Healthy Futures Fund. Jibwick supports the move to do away with the bonded warehouses and collect taxes upon arrival to Guam on all products, as this simplifies the tax collection process and enhances equitable tax collection across all importers. Jibwick also recognizes the efforts that Department of Revenue and Taxation has made to comply with the current law with regard to the tobacco stamp tax that unfortunately has yet to yield the intended results. Therefore, Jibwick recommends that an alternative be sought for the track and tracing of legitimate tax tobacco products in the market recognized by WHO. This track and tracing system is vital. So in no means am I saying eliminate a tracking system. I'm just saying the stamp tax has not been implemented efficiently. We need to find an alternative way to ensure appropriate tobacco tax collection, illicit cigarette trade reduction, and public health goals are properly supported. In conclusion, Jibwick supports Bill 47-37, but recommends that a functional, functional alternative for the track and tracing of tobacco products be sought. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony.
It's to us, Massey, Director Ariola. So I'd like to call on next Rick Duennius for his testimony.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to defer my testimony after Mr. Ilagan and Mr. Shimizu, if that's okay?
Yes, that's fine. So Mr. Ilagan, you're recognized.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Art Ilagan. I just want to make some disclosures before I do my testimony.
Sorry, could you speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
I just want to make some disclosures before I start my testimony. I work for Cavill Enterprise, not MITPA. I have nothing to do with MITPA. But yesterday or the day before, John Cavill called me up and said, "What's this, Art? They're trying to get rid of tobacco, the bonded warehouse, they're trying to get rid of the Stamp Act requirements." And then on the bottom of that, there was something about liquor, taxing liquor at the point of entry into Guam. I said, "I don't know. Let me call Senator Joe, and I'll ask him." So I called him up, and I asked him about all the stuff that was in the bill. And he said, "Art, those guys have to pay tax." So I said, "Okay, let me tell John." And I spoke to John, and Joe told me to have a meeting with the three companies. So we met at the Chamber of Commerce, and we discussed what goes on. And I put my input as to what I think may happen. As a former director of Revantax, I worked at Revantax for probably like 37, almost something like that. So I'm no spring chicken anymore. I look at the monitor and say, "Who's that old man up there?" But when it comes to taxation, taxation really is a voluntary compliance. You usually rely on the taxpayer to report their income properly. And if there's not a proper reporting, then there's audits and there's adjustments made. And then there's also enforcement compliance when the taxpayer, you know, is not reporting. And I guess the issue here is there's some allegations that are made that $10 to $15 million of tobacco tax is not being collected. Since there's this mistrust of, I guess, collection of tax, tobacco tax, DRT has policies set up there that I agree with Marie. When the procedures, the cigarette enters into Guam through the ports, the port looks at those documents and accounts for those cigarettes. Then it's locked, and it's shipped over to the wholesaler. The wholesaler cannot open that container unless Revantax is there. So that thing is controlled. Once they open that, Revantax and the wholesaler would open that, and they account for every cigarette that's in that cart, in that container. There's no leakage. It goes into the warehouse, and that warehouse is locked. Nobody can go in there. The wholesaler cannot go in there without Revantax. So that thing is controlled. Every cigarette is controlled in that area. When a vendor or a wholesaler wants to withdraw cigarettes, they call Revantax. If Revantax is available, they'll send somebody up there to account for what needs to be released. The problem with that is the wholesalers needs the cigarettes, most likely within the day or two days for their retailers to get. If it doesn't, they don't get it, then the retailers don't get it. Right? So it's like Revantax needs help in monitoring the cigarette tax. They need more staff, they need more... You cannot rely on somebody from GRT, right? They go out there, GRT has... If you go and look in their offices, there's boxes stacked up, because every month, there's like 11,000 returns that are there that they have to process. Then you take two of those people out, that thing gets further pushed back, and they don't process. Then when you try to renew your license, guess what? They tell you, "Please bring in your GRT forms," because it doesn't show in the system. Isn't that right? I think that's a big issue. Everybody's affected by this, right? So the funding, including... Sir, your office before, right? I mean, we did a lot. We did compliance, canvassing the island for unlicensed companies. Those were things that needed to get done, and we did it. Back then, Joe did it. He was really into making sure people complied, paid their tax, right? It's only fair that each of us follow all returns. We put everything that we earned in there, and that wholesalers cigarettes should do the same. But we need to monitor it the right way, right? My proposal is really... There's a lot of taxes that are missing. 15, what's $10 to $15 million is missing. My proposal is look at what is missing and what we need to collect that. Mrs. Lozama is short-staffed. In the past, as a director, there were special funds. There were special funds from the passport office. Passport office, I guess they receive revenues. And that revenue is split between Revantax for us to function and the library. Then there's the Insurance and Banking Fund that money's set aside, and that was just done under Senator Rodriguez. There's money set aside for the operations of insurance and banking so that they can properly manage their insurance and make sure that they're operating properly. I think what needs to happen here is part of that Healthy Futures Fund, maybe $300,000, to hire five or six people dedicated to looking at tobacco tax so that the $10 or $15 million that they say they're missing is collected. My proposal is when a Revantax officer goes up to the bonded warehouse with the warehouse personnel, they look at what they're going to pull out, right? I think they should change the law that once they pull out, you pay tax right there. They send an officer, a collector, and somebody, GRT, to look at what's being released. And before they release it, pay the tax right there. That way, it doesn't escape taxation, right? I think that's, to me, the most proper way to control that. It's controlled, but I think what you're looking at is that they make the payment on the 20th of the next month, right? Isn't that what the requirement is? They give them that leeway to like 60 days or 45 days to make that payment. If you just collect the tax right then, when they're looking, when they're counting the cigarettes that they're going to draw, make them pay it right there. Because the wholesaler has already sold that cigarette to a retailer, right? So there's money there. Just take it right there and not wait till, you know, the money's not there and they use the money somewhere else, because that's the way a business operates, right? Whatever revenue is there, whatever comes up that they need to spend for to keep operating, they spend it there. So just take the money right there. And I think you'll find your $10 million or $15 million that you feel is missing, right? So that's my testimony, and I feel we should try to do that, just to collect that money that is estimated to be missing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ilagan, for your testimony. I'd like to recognize Tom Shimizu.
Good morning, good morning, Senators. Yes, I hope you understand the bonded process, right? It's fully controlled. Revantax has everything they need to track and collect. But I work for Ambrose, I'm a distributor, and as the bill was proposed, we oppose it because it eliminates the bonded warehouse system. And, you know, the elimination of the bonded warehouse system, it penalizes the honest operators. If truly there's taxes that weren't paid, why not just revoke that license and let the good operators continue? The bonded system's easy to administer, right? Customs, customers clear with customs, tracers sent to DRT. DRT witnesses the deposit into the bond. DRT witnesses the withdrawal from the bond. And it's simple. If product's missing when you get there, two things. Demand payment for what's missing, or if the wholesaler doesn't have the money. You know, the bond, it's just not a term. It's an insurance policy. We go out and buy bonding insurance. So if I don't have the money for 500 cases that are missing, call my insurance company and say, "We want to cash in the bond." You're going to get paid your taxes. So it's a simple, simple process. You know, if you get rid of the bond, at least for my company, we're looking at least 30 jobs that are going to disappear on Guam. And I have an operation on Saifan that have the bonded capability. I'm just going to move it up there. And, you know, what happens to those 30 jobs and their families? You know, they're going to suffer. I don't know, it's going to be a problem for them. But that's just for my company. But in general, it's going to eliminate direct employment taxes. You know, it's going to reduce the amount of export business that we do now. It's going to reduce payroll taxes, income taxes, corporate income taxes. There's a lot of indirect effects because there's port fees that get collected for us to bring product in, to send it out. Those go away. There's support services, trucking companies are used to move all the containers around. There's insurance fees, like I just talked about, that we paid. In addition, the cost of products will increase. There's going to be more tax-free purchases on the base, because the base bring that in tax-free. You're not going to put a tax stamp on that product. More tax-free sending in the mail, right? Because if it comes in the post office, nobody's checking that. If it goes through a private freight forwarder, absolutely the use tax is collected. Or it's not even supposed to be put in the mail, it gets confiscated. But if it comes United States Postal Service, forget about it. You're not getting any of that tax. There's going to be more tax-free purchase at the airport, the smuggling and illicit trade. Really, the major issue with tobacco tax collections is the shortage of qualified personnel. We need to fund DRT and Customs and Quarantine and allow the agencies to train or hire the people needed. I mean, these two agencies are the cash register of the government of Guam. I'm just not here to say, "Okay, don't do it," but let me offer some solutions. You know, the bonded system, the alternative that Teresa's talking about, it's there. It's in place, it's 90% there. All we got to do is... I don't know why we would mandate... I guess we have to mandate them because they don't have the funding or the personnel to do it. But mandate that DRT verify entries of taxes due for tobacco. All the documentation is tracked and available through the bonded warehouse process. It's just that the one thing that's not being done is the checkbook is not being balanced. You have all the documents needed to balance a checkbook, and then you would catch, is there taxes that have not been paid, yes or no? And all the reconciliation is, "You took product out of the warehouse? Show me two things. Give me a check for the amount of product that you took out, or show me the export certificates that it left with the bill of ladings that are stamped." We have all of that information. The only thing that's not done is that last part, the reconciliation. I don't know about you, I have a checking account. The bank doesn't tell me to balance it, but I do, because you have to. So, you know, one-half of 1%, just a rounding error of the taxes that are collected, could fund one or two or three personnel to help DRT. And it doesn't take a lot more people to do it because there's a handful of people using, you know, of businesses that have the bonded warehouse. So you don't need an army. You just need a couple of qualified people. If data entry is the issue, make the tobacco licenses, upload all the documentation that's required to do the reconciliation in the DRT system. DRT would only need to investigate when the numbers don't balance. This will eliminate data entry by DRT. Currently, DRT filings are done by the taxpayers. We are no longer allowed to file manually, so there is no more, you know, it's all in there. It's just a matter of running the system and making sure things balance. And another solution? Have DRT and Customs follow the rules and regulations. The mandates are good. They just need to be enforced and followed. You know, the public auditor cited in his Executive Summary Number 2302, and I quote, "Wholesaler remains licensed for tobacco in violation of Tobacco Control Act with two active debt liens." This license just shouldn't have been renewed. Or, you know, having a bonded... Or, you know, having a bonded warehouse, you got to be approved. Revoke it. Take it away. Then that wholesaler would have to pay when the product gets to the port, when it leaves the port. Another regulation that is not being enforced, again, from the public auditor, I quote, "The Tobacco Control Act of 2006 states that the transportation or importation of tobacco products for delivery or use in Guam without payment is prohibited, and customs and quarantine is mandated to maintain a database of those in violation and to determine and administer violation charges." So it's all there, you just got to do it. But it's not being done for various reasons. In the private sector, we have rules and regulations mandated by our owners. If the mandates require funding and certain skills, we do not eliminate the rules and regulations, because it's hard. We train individuals to do the job, and we hire qualified people to do the requirements. Again, we don't eliminate or change the rules and regulations. We get it done. We fund it. And all I ask is that we do the same. Fund DRT and customs, so they can hire or train individuals to allow the agencies to follow the rules and regulations. These are the agencies that are responsible for the revenue that GOV Guam taxes its citizens and collects. Thank you.
Mr. Shimizu, for your testimony. I'd like to call on Rick Duñez. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Senators. My name is Ricardo Duñez, and I'm with Western Sales Trading Company. We are a tobacco distributor on Guam. I'm here to testify in opposition to Bill 47-37. Before I get into more detail for our reasons, I do want to point out to some of the other individuals who testified this morning, this bill is not a tax increase. This bill will not affect the rate of taxes on tobacco or alcohol. So to make the argument that tax increases have been shown to be effective in curbing the use of tobacco is misplaced in this situation. It's true, that does happen when there's an increase, but that increase has taken place years ago. Tobacco tax currently account for nearly 50% of the retail value of a pack of cigarettes. Currently, it is taxed at $4 per pack. Cigarettes average anywhere between $8 to $9 to $10. So right there, close to 50% of the value, the retail value of a cigarette is just on Our reasons for opposing this bill is, we have two discussions here. We're dealing with tax collection versus tax monitoring and enforcement. This bill focuses on nothing but tax collection. When is the timing of the tax collection? The bill proposes not just for tobacco, but also for alcohol, the taxes be paid upon entry into Guam at the Port Authority of Guam. That's paid in advance of any pack of cigarettes, any can of beer being sold in Guam. No other industry on Guam is required to prepay the taxes on commerce. Can you imagine costless, payless, seven day, day by day, importing a container of Spam or a container of rice? And GOV Guam says, "Pay up now, but I haven't even sold one can of Spam. We have not even sold one pack of cigarettes, and we are being required?" The tax system is based on voluntary reporting, not just for tobacco or alcohol. For all taxes collected on Guam, it is based on the concept of a voluntary reporting. So we have that now. Now we're just looking at the timing of the payment, because this bill is a step backwards as far as enforcement and control is concerned. This bill proposes to eliminate the Tax Stamp Act for tobacco. Testimony from the Cancer Society and everyone else who are looking at it from a social issue has recognized that worldwide, tax stamps for tobacco are the highest standard for monitoring and controlling tobacco and for cigarettes. It provides that visible cue of what product has been paid and what product hasn't been paid. It is the pinnacle of control. A step down from that would be the bonded warehouse, because the bonded warehouse has those rules and regulations, or is supposed to have those rules and regulations, to monitor the inbound and the outbound flow of cigarettes into a bonded warehouse. It is tightly controlled. The rules, as written, if followed, makes it near impossible. The problem is not that the system doesn't work. The problem is you have not provided adequate resources to Department of Revenue and Taxation to do a proper job of monitoring cigarette control, which is their job. To say that they are not mandated to reconcile or to look into any of this is akin to saying that we're, Revenue and Taxation is not responsible for conducting any audits or exams on individuals if they don't pay their tax. It may not be specifically mandated, but it is expressly implied in the rules, in the law, because the law provides, this is the law, and Revenue and Taxation has this authority to go out and enforce these laws. So they are mandated to provide these services. So for us to say, "This is really hard for us to do. Revenue and taxation, we don't have the resources, we don't have the bodies, we don't have them properly trained." It's hard. It's difficult. So let's just give up. That's what I'm paying my taxes for, is for the government to say, "When something's hard, I just decide not to do it, but I'm going to collect the tax and I'm going to collect it upfront." It's unfair. It's inequitable. And quite honestly, I feel it's unconstitutional. I'm not a lawyer, but still, what am I paying my taxes for? What are any of us paying our taxes for if all we can expect that when something's hard, we punt? Let's not do it then. You know, I appreciate Senator Snodgrass trying to find a simple solution, but it's not a simple problem. It's a very complex problem. Tax stamps are the only adequate way to monitor and control tobacco products in Guam. The bonded warehouse is a close compromise. It provides the control, but it doesn't provide that visible cue that's out in the market. So getting rid of the bond is akin to deregulation. It's a step backwards. Instead of talking about modernizing Revenue and Taxation, let's move into the 21st century and let's get our systems up and running. Let's take a step back and just decide, "Okay, we don't need to regulate, we just need to collect. We just need to collect the tax." You are abdicating your duty and responsibility as the government when you do that. And it's a slippery slope. Can you imagine? Oh, it's so hard to collect grocery receipts tax. Well, let's just have them pay upfront. Nobody has to do, we don't have to collect GRT tax. We'll just, whatever you import in, we'll tax 100% upfront, you know, before you even sell one product. So we are opposed to the bill because it does not address the issues at hand. It's a knee-jerk reaction to a very complex problem. What are the solutions? The solutions are, you need to provide the proper resources to Department of Education or Department of Revenue and Taxation to properly conduct the mandates that are required by law. An auditor, an accountant, an employee over the Revenue Taxation is compensated at a rate below an equivalent position at Department of Administration, at Department of Education, at BBMR, at autonomous agencies. So when you have a revenue agent or an accountant or Revenue Taxation that's making less than an equivalent position at Department of Administration, you get an exodus of people. Revenue and taxation has a recruitment and retention problem. Why? They hire people, they put them in, they get them trained, they get a little bit of experience under their belt, and as soon as job posting for Department of Administration comes out, they're gone, because you're not properly funding them. You're not properly providing resources. If you want to encourage tax evasion, you keep your Department of Revenue and Taxation weak. You keep them underfunded, undermotivated, you know, undertrained. Because anybody who wants to evade tax, they'll say, "Well, my chances are almost, more than 60% that I'm not going to get caught," because they're so overwhelmed. So the solution is not this. Solution is fixing the systemic problems of Revenue and Taxation. Until you get the tax stamp program up and running, you cannot get rid of the bond, because that is your last line of defense for adequate control. If you do that, you're stepping backwards. If you do that, you are violating the master settlement agreement that the tobacco companies came into, that came forward with, in their agreement with all the state's attorney generals' offices. Guam participates in the master settlement agreement. Guam gets funding from manufacturers every year. I'm not sure what it is, but I think it's over $1 million. Part of that master settlement agreement dictates that every state or territory that participates in this program should make active enforcement of all tobacco control laws, all tobacco tax laws. If we're showing that we're taking a step backwards, you risk losing that funding. And that's less resources for Guam. So in good conscience, we look at this and say, "This is an attempt to try to improve collection, but it does nothing for enforcement. It does nothing for control." This is economic prohibition on tobacco and alcohol. This is notice to all black market smugglers who would bring cigarettes in, that the borders are open. Whatever I can sneak in, the windfall is tremendous. At $40 a carton on tax, that's a big economic incentive for individuals to go out there and engage in black market smuggling. So for those reasons, among others, I don't know why we're looking at alcohol. No one's talking about alcohol not being paid, but this law will require alcohol taxes to be paid at the port. But other than that, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duñez, for your testimony. So now I'd like to recognize the public auditor, B.J. Cruz, for his.
Thank you very much, Senator. 1907 was not the last audit that the Office of Public Accountability issued as it relates to cigarettes and tobacco. I mean cigarettes and alcohol. And we issued 2303 just last month, again, making the recommendations. And in it, I'm glad that there was mention about paying upfront of the alcohol tax, because I'm not convinced that the only amount of alcohol that's being sold in the stores comes up to about $4 million in collections each year. There's too much leakage there. The number of containers of alcohol that come in can't just be $4 million worth of tax. Something is amiss. And I'm not sure whether or not there's going to be a need to have a tax stamp on alcohol to force some of the alcohol companies to do the same thing that happened when we did the, when people found out that we were going, the legislature was considering the Tax Stamp Act. That's when one of the cigarette companies came in and on their own admitted to $14 million of previously unpaid taxes. It wasn't the Revenue and Taxation audited and found that it was missing. The distributor itself came in and admitted to the underpayment over the previous years. I'm not exactly sure. By my conjecture, the reason why they did that was they had to make sure that if the tax stamp had been implemented, would have found out that their monthly payments had been short a certain amount, and they didn't want to show how much that difference was by saying, "We had underpaid for a number of years, an unstated number of years, but we'll admit to $14 million." That's what forced them to come forward. It was the fear that knowing that there was going to be a tax stamp, they knew that the next month, I mean, the first month that the tax stamp came into effect, that it would show that, "How is it that for the last five years you've been paying $2 million, and now you're paying $5? Well, that's because you obviously have been underpaying." That's what forced that one company to come forward. It wasn't Revenue and Taxation finding it. It was trying to cover themselves to make sure that you don't go back and look and try to figure out how much was shorted over those previous years. And ideally, I wish that, you know, that the cigarette tax stamp had worked, but as you put it, it's been now seven, six years. It's ready to have its first communion for primacy. And it's not been implemented. And it doesn't look like we have a large enough market here to make it worth anybody coming out to do it, with all due respect to my friends at ACS. Ideally, I would love to monitor it. I mean, I was the one that raised all the taxes. I'm the one that everybody hates because of it. And I would love to monitor it, if not just make it outright illegal, but I can't. But the thing is, is that Revenue and Taxation just is unable. And all three of the distributors submitted, it is self-reporting, and we don't know. There's one suggestion that was made, now we're going to, rather than just have two people go out there a week to count, we're going to need to send out someone from the treasurer's office to receive the check and some security to accompany the person that receives the check. The history of the bonded warehouse was that when, if anybody goes back and looks at the law, when they had the importation of cigarette tax, on the floor of the legislature, somebody's put in or bonded warehouse into the legislation. That's how bonded warehouse That's how bonded warehouse was created. There was no bill that was introduced on bonded warehouse before that. It was cigarette tax stamp, and someone on the floor said, rather than collect the tax at the port, or, they, they created a bonded warehouse. And Revenue and Taxation hasn't done their, the SOPs for the bonded warehouse. There have been proposed rules when we did the audits. In fact, the audit that Doris did before, while I was in the legislature, said that they had gone up to Revenue and Taxation, and in 1990 or something, in 90s or the 80s, someone up there tried to get the rules and regulations passed, adopted, and it still hadn't been adopted to this day. We don't know how much we're losing in cigarette tax, in, in the cigarettes. We do know that one person admits to having underpaid 14 million, and that was with all the, with all the bonded, two people going out there counting? I don't know how much the leakage is on alcohol, but with the, the amount of alcohol that's going through, and especially, I thought about this during the pandemic, the amount of everybody sitting at home drinking, I was like, how come the, the alcohol tax has not increased? You know, but, but it's, but it's difficult to, it's almost impossible to, to audit. The only way to do that is to just catch it at the port. And as it relates to trying to get enforcement, while I was still had your titles, I wrote to FBI, I wrote to the U.S. Attorney General, and I said, help Guam comply with its MSA agreement. Help me get the, the, the cigarette companies to give me, or give Revenue and Taxation a copy of the invoice of how, how many cigarettes are actually sent to Guam. I could not get R.J. Reynolds to, to send it to me. We wrote to them, I got, I asked the FBI, I asked the U.S. Attorney, help me get them to admit the numbers so that I can try to audit how much cigarettes was brought in and how much was sold over the last 10 or 15 years. I couldn't get an answer. I, in fact, I didn't get an answer from anybody. And then, yes, maybe this is a punting, but it's, it's my, it's my last hope. Just collect it at the port. If you're going to bring in that, that amount, then just pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your testimony? Well, thank you, thank you, public auditor. Yes, Director Ariola?
Thank you, Senators. I just want to state, and I didn't state it earlier, that Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center primarily is funded by the Healthy Future Funds, which these syntaxes are deposited to. So as part of my testimony, I would just want to say that I am totally in favor of however way, shape, or form, taxes of the Healthy Future Fund is, becomes more and more robust. Whether it's 15 million, 30 million, one more million in the Healthy Future Fund will go a long way in, in prevention and treatment when it comes to addiction. As we know, some of these legal products that our island residents use produce addiction. So again, we are the benefactor, the main benefactor. I think a few people, few, few get some monies here and there from Healthy Future Funds, but mostly it's Guam Behavioral Health. So not to get into the weeds of things, but I'm here to just say that I am in full support of however way leakage, as the, as the OPA had mentioned, or, or if that's stated earlier, whatever leakage is happening, I welcome the, the plugging up and those funds coming and supporting our people. I do want to recognize too that there are legitimate businesses who have been on the island for a very long time, and I too believe that they are wanting to do their part as corporate citizens. So I just want to state it that, and unfortunately, I do need to leave, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Before you leave, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So in your testimony, you stated that perhaps recommending a alternate track and trace system. Do you have any?
No clue. We're going to have to look, look into it, or somebody has to look into it. I know it's not the only tracking mechanism, and I only stated that, that maybe an alternative. Again, I want to emphasize that no tracking mechanism is, is not what I'm advocating. Whether it's the, the tobacco stamp or another alternative, whatever it is, I've only stated that maybe an alternative should be looked into because the tobacco stamp has not been in effect and is, for whatever reason, is not taking off, and I don't want to get into that, but I'm just saying it's not the only tracking mechanism that we can look into. But no, I do not know of another, but I know it's not the only, and I guess researchers can begin to research, and I guess I can do too and recommend, but I think between all of us here, we can figure out another way, or if this is the way, there's alternatives that have been mentioned.
Thank you so much, Director.
Madam Chair, if I could make a comment or pose a question to Ms. Ariola?
Sure.
Would you be interested to know that when we were researching tobacco stamp tax programs, we had been in contact with a couple of vendors of what's involved in, in getting taxes and what is your estimate? And, and we've heard back from at least two that based on their experience, and these are international companies to provide services throughout the world, they're the biggest ones in the United States, and they, based on their experience and other jurisdiction, they said conservatively, if you don't have tax stamps, you are losing probably close to 30% of your tax revenue, potential tax revenue. If we had tax stamps, would you be interested in a 30% increase in your, in tobacco stamps and income coming into the Healthy Futures Fund?
Again, I am in full support of however this body wants to plug up the holes of taxes not being collected, because Guam Behavioral Health is the primary, the main benefactor of the Healthy Future Fund. So 30%, whatever the mechanism, I'm all for it. I'm just here because I'm the benefactor, the main benefactor. And so, again, efficient collection, however you folks define that, and ensure that the holes and the leakage is plugged up, I'm in full support.
Okay, thank you, Director. Before you leave, I just want to open up the floor to my colleagues for Director Ariola before she leaves. Any questions?
Actually, just one comment.
Sure.
Just one comment, yeah. Because, you know, of course, what Mr. Duaneas has said earlier as well, that Guam and the territory is part of that, the settlement, the Tobacco Act settlement, that this could be viewed as a, a step backwards, and that being the case, being a step, have a step, step backwards, that Ms. Ariola might lose a great amount of that funding with that step backwards.
Again, we're talking about increasing the Healthy Future Fund. I mean, I'm, I'm very, very, I am completely here because I am about more funding in the Healthy Future Funds because I'm the primary benefactor. So of course not. If anything is going to be eroded from the Healthy Future Fund, then I'm not in support of. Again, I am here because I'm the main benefactor, and I will support any plugging up of any leakage and any efficient, efficiencies, pathways for collection, so that the Healthy Future Fund gets what it should get and not what it's just getting, if that's the case. So thank you very much, Senators. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
I have another meeting to go to. Thank you.
Any other Senators for Senator, for Director Ariola? Okay, all right. Thank you, Director, for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So bonding was mentioned. So I understand there hasn't been rules, or is there rules actually, Deputy Director? Are there rules that have been promulgated in regulating the bonded warehouse?
Well, I do know that we have, I am a little bit puzzled by the earlier remark that there is no standard operating procedure with regard to the bonded warehouse process. I do know that we, we do have that in place, and that is what our staff follows. There may have been some miscommunication with the earlier audits, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Can you provide a copy to the committee?
Yes.
As well as the public auditor?
Will do.
All right, thank you. So in regards to bonding, have, has Department of Revenue and Taxation required a bonding amount from wholesalers?
I don't have the actual details of that, but I do know that though the companies that bring in the large amounts, they're all bonded, they all have bonded warehouses.
There actually is a policy, a requirement for a certain amount? Okay, I'm seeing heads shaking.
I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't have that information.
Okay. So that's, that is an issue I hear. I see some variation in responses.
Okay.
As the public auditor had mentioned, that there were proposed regulations that were drafted and submitted to Revenue and Taxation, they were never approved, they were never, I mean, they, they never went through the AAA process, they were never approved, no. There was a requirement that, there is a requirement that rules and regulations be promulgated, but it's never been completed. As far as standard operating procedures within Revenue and Taxation for how they administer the bond, they may have an informal SOP, but it's not something that's based on approved rules and regulations. The proposed rules and regulations, I believe, did include the requirement that a financial or insurance bond be posted, but because those rules and regulations were never adopted, I don't think every distributor has done that, so.
All right, thank you. Just for clarification, Deputy Director, so are you in support of this bill?
Actually, whatever, whatever is handed down, as I mentioned earlier, our agency complies. So if this bill, you know, of course, this bill will eliminate the time that our staff currently spends at the bonded warehouses. You know, with regard to the, the stamps itself, you know, it's just, we've been trying to procure those and have run into some issues. So of course, I would actually say that would be a relief for us to not have to try to seek, continuously seek or, or, you know, throw efforts, you know, behind trying to comply with the mandates. With that said, I mean, if the bonded warehouse, you know, requirement were to remain in effect, I, I do appreciate the wholesalers advising that, you know, you should, you know, provide us with additional resources so that we are able to more effectively carry out those inventory checks.
Yeah, the appropriations chair is listening very intently, but I know we, we did, we've, we've increased the, the funding for DRT successively in successive budgets, but that's another matter. I just, perhaps, so with the bill, if the bill comes to fruition, how would DRT distinguish duty-free products, so things that are being exported, things that are going to the military bases, as well as, you know, duty-free at the airport?
I believe that the, a certificate is, and I'm sorry, I'm, I don't have exact details, but I believe paperwork certificate is provided to account for that. In fact, there is at least one wholesaler that I know of that has gone the opposite direction and has pretty much said, you know, we, we are going to ensure that, you know, these things are paid upfront, and, you know, it is, the onus is on them to ensure that, you know, the exports, export information is provided so that they would be properly credited.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is the master settlement agreement. So the bill, if it's not amended, do you see this as supporting enforcement of tax, tobacco tax, as well as actually, it could be, you know, alcohol, but tobacco alone? Would this support enforcement of tobacco tax collections?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused with regard to the master settlement agreement?
Right. So basically, we're required to collect taxes on tobacco, tobacco products?
I don't see how it could not be enforced, I mean, proof that, that it's been collected. If rather than 38, you're collecting 50, you're showing that you are collecting. I don't know how it's not collecting or it's not enforcing.
Okay.
It's absolutely enforcing.
Okay. Even with the absence of a stamp?
Even without the, we, we've been doing it for the last 40 years without a stamp, and it's been accepted.
Okay.
It's just that we're not, I, I'm insisting that we're not collecting the full amount. If we collect the full amount by charging it at the port and having them claim credit and drawback, I mean, for their export or for their duty-free stuff, then you, you have collected it already. And there'll be more than, for sure, they're going to have photographs, about 10 pictures showing how many cases and the ship going out and the Bill of Leyden going out with, with stuff. They'll prove that they've sent this off if they have to, if they're going to get their credit. Now it's voluntary, it's.
How about, but how do we differentiate from, like illicit products, for instance? So that's one of the, the issues with getting rid of the.
There's, there's already a problem with illicit products right now. It's cussings and quarantine that needs to be able to clear those, I mean, catch those coming in in boxes. I, you know, that goes into the whole other, my, our whole other one of the non-collection of use tax, you know, which is probably greater, but that's a whole, a whole other issue.
Madam Chair, in regards to the MSA, I think, I think we still need to make the distinction between tax collection and tax, and tobacco control and enforcement. I mean, the, the OP, the public auditor is correct as far as, yes, we will collect 100% of what's declared. It does nothing as far as controlling black market smuggling, people who would under-declare or non-declaration, people basically who would be, would be smuggling. The MSA is not just in, 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 in accord with tax collection, it's with tax monitoring and control, control the market, making sure that non-MSA product doesn't come in, making sure black market product doesn't come in, making sure that you're abiding by all the laws, including collections of taxes. But there's more to decode than just the collection of the tax. There's, there's a whole litany of things that, that are required by, for tobacco control. So yes, I mean, we're halfway there, but certainly by taking away the bond, you've eliminated. eliminated the last defense, however inefficient, however abused it may be currently, but you've eliminated that last and only process that we had to maintain control. So yes, you're, you are, you are moving backwards. Moving forward will be tax stamp, but moving, you get the tax stamp and it's like, there's no question that what's out there in the market is 100% tax paid. There's, there's no such thing as leakage because if you're selling a cigarette that doesn't have the tax stamp, then you automatically know that it wasn't tax paid and it was probably smuggled or it came out of the, of the military base or wherever. So, yes, I still stand by my statement that it's a step backward that would jeopardize the terms of our agreement under, under the MSA.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duñez. Sorry, Mr. Loggins.
I just want to make a comment about the military sells. You know, if we stop, I guess, selling from our local market, they're going to go and somebody who has connections there, they're going to buy it off the military. It's happening, I see it happening, so somebody needs to control the military, maybe going back to Congressman Moilen, trying to get him to get the military to buy their products from local companies and not ship it in. The cigarettes, the same price as outside, $50, $60 or something like that, they increase their price, but they're not paying, to me, that's profit for the, for, for the exchange, right? Not, and that, that money should go to Gov Guam. They increased it because our prices outside was increased by that amount.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loggins. I'd like to recognize my apologies, the sponsor of the bill. I should have had him go first, but, so you recognize, Senator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on the last statement of retired Art Loggins from the military, all sales go to the moral welfare, come on now, you and I both know that. I know where you're coming from on profits, and I agree with you, maybe we need to buy, they need to sell more local products on base. I have no doubt about that, I go in the base, I also buy in the market. Often, I buy in the market. But you know, I think I've heard enough on this bill, and I don't want to burden you any further. The issue is not really the bonded warehouse, and exactly what Mr. Duñez said, and Art, you and I have been in business for many years, not just 10, maybe 20, maybe even 30 years. And exactly what you said was, when I worked at Revenue and Tax, we did enforcement, and there was not a problem with that one. There's nobody's going to escape during our time. What's going on now, I don't know, but it's evident based on what we're, I'm looking at when I look at the OPA report and I look at now the updated OPA report. I think the issue is going to come down to, 'cause I'm going to withdraw this bill, just tell you straight up. I'm going to withdraw this bill, but I'm going to attend the oversight hearing that Senator Canathas has coming up on DRT. Because of the appropriation guy, it bothers me that we got a leakage. I'm trying to identify where we're going to get our revenue. I see businesses doing their best they can, and whatever reasons anybody wants to claim anything, when we go before the budget hearing, I ask, what do you need? We have budget hearings, budget meetings before the budget hearings. Where are you at? Where do you want to go and how can we help you? And I know that every agency has to tend with administration, but when you come before the legislature, if you don't say what you need, and I'm hearing it already, that they need more people for tobacco inspection, alcohol inspection, then maybe when we put in the budget, we'll make it very specific line, so that the director don't have an option but to fund those areas. And I think that's what some of my colleagues will probably agree with. If that's the way to get it done, then maybe that's the way we'll get it done. Because all, all the consumers and all the wholesalers, I know them all, I deal with every one of them. You know, they say, "Tomorrow, pura familia." But you know what? If it's wrong, it's wrong, if it's right, it's right. I looked at the bonded warehouse, not as a step back, but if you can bring in enough of it, you can pay for it when it comes in. But it's evident that you can't. It's not possible. And maybe it's a step backward like Mr. Duñez brought up, but I was looking at it as a way of trying to just get it done, because the tobacco stamp ain't moving. Very obvious, it's not going anywhere. And if you're, and if Mr. Duñez and many of you probably are talking to people off island, maybe you can help convince them to come to Guam and offer on how we can get it here. Because six years is just too long. And, and you know, when I talk to the, the director of the OFB, when we look at Revenue and Tax, we're looking at the agency that brings in more than 90% of the revenue. And if there's a leakage, the leakage is there. It's not anywhere else, because why? Somebody's not tracking it. And I understand where Art brought up about GRT section, tons and tons of paper. Holler handbrake, get rid of that paper, fix it, put it in the system, move people to that section, you can do it. Revenue Tax can do it. You can do it. And I, and the reason why I know you guys can do it is because you kick out a lot of tax refunds. You can shift people to go after the funds that were leaking. And if somebody doesn't have, and is not up to date in their, in paying their taxes, then my golly gee, don't renew their license. That's part of the requirement for renewal. If you're not up to date, you don't get a license. And if you don't get a license, don't scream at the director or the governor or any senator down here, because it's not right. Because many businesses out there are making every effort to pay their taxes. And if the leakage is somewhere there, for about, fix it. The legislature's not here to macro-manage you guys. You macro-manage your own agency. We're just hoping to facilitate, get and decide where the appropriation should go so everybody's taken care of. But with this bill, Bill 47, Madam Chair, you don't even have to have any further discussion because I'm withdrawing this bill. So that we can figure out what is going on, because on, on the 20th, the 19th at 8:00 AM, DRT is having, there's an oversight by Senator Canatha. I'm going to be there, listen, huh? Alongside the OPA. I want to know where, where is all the money at? Why ain't the collections being done on the basis? Why isn't the collection being, happening with tobacco? But in fact, on the bill, before I withdrew it, yes, the alcohol tobacco, the alcohol shouldn't have been there, administrative oversight, but it's dead. I'm officially submitting the documents to withdraw the bill, and we move on. And then I, when I sit down with a meeting with DRT, if they don't bring up tobacco, bonded warehouse, today's hearing I won't forget. This becomes an official record for me on the appropriation, and every agency that I attend their hearings, they come up with excuses of something, please be aware, don't, don't say we didn't fund you. When we find the funds to fund you and you don't do your job, be ready to face your chair, your oversight chair, or even me. Because then, I am, I'm here for the people of Guam, I'm not here for any individual or other than my wife and my grandchildren and everybody else's. But for what, let's move on on this one, and I just hope DRT, you know, Deputy Director, do what you need to do. You need help, call me. I know you have an oversight, but I am the money guy. Call me. Because then I'll communicate with Senator Perez and says, hey, this is what they're looking for in funds. Let's work together, let's get this done. Let's go after the leakage. Let's find a way to help you. All right? Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Sanagastin. Mr. Loggins?
I just want to make one comment about what Senator Joe said, about directors asking for what they want. The process of the budget, really, in Gov Guam, they, the directors are supposed to go to their staff and ask them what they want or what they need. They take that to the budget office and they say, this is my budget. What budget does is they look at the whole thing, the whole budget process, and they say, this is all you're going to get. So when the, when the director comes in and says, this is not what I asked for, they should say that, this is not what I asked for. Because they need to operate at a certain level, especially Revan Tax. You've got all these, 95%, of the income of Gov Guam goes through Revan Tax. Revan Tax needs to be funded properly. The staff of the Revan Tax needs to be paid properly. You've got to look at, back in the 80s, Revan Tax employees were one of the higher-paid employees, right? And then all of a sudden, Haye Study came in and they did a study, and this study is being done by DOA. They're looking at their staff, so of course they went up, and Revan Tax went down. So who wants to work with Revan Tax? Who wants to go before the court and criminal case and stand before the judge? DOA doesn't do that. DOA doesn't go up to a taxpayer and say, you didn't file what you're supposed to pay, pay up. And they get threatened by that. So look at the pay. When a director comes in, make sure they're immune to being fired, because I was almost like, what are you doing, Art? This is your budget. And they were almost like ready to let me go because I said, that is not my budget. I need this money to operate. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Loggins. I know, so we've been, just notified the bill's going to be withdrawn. I just want to maybe open the floor to my colleagues if they have any final comments, questions? Okay, none. All right, so.
I do, I just have one.
Okay, Senator Duñez.
And I respect the fact that the author, and I'm glad he's going to withdraw it, so I'm not going to be labor points, but, Mrs. Zama, I have to put this on the record. This discussion on the bonded warehouse, I'm concerned that there's been statements, and I want you to put it on the record, that as a Deputy Director representing Revan Tax today, you fully vouch for the integrity of the bonded warehouse system and the Revan Tax employees who are assigned to issue alongside the wholesalers product. You fully stand behind the integrity of that system.
Absolutely.
So, I agree, and I, and Mr. Duñez, full disclosure, is my first cousin, Pima, but that's not the reason why I agree with him, because I disagreed before when we talk about this issue of outsourcing on the tax stamp. Looks like we're doing everything we can to get away from doing the tax stamp. That's the problem that's wrong. That's a regulatory function, and I know the chairman will have this discussion subsequent to that, but it drives me crazy that an institution that has at its fingertips the entire funding source to do what it needs to do through the taxation of the process of implementing the stamp is having difficulty with that process. Because that's the cost of doing business. When you're doing your regulatory function, so you're not out, you don't need a budget for that, the budget's built in to the fact that you're collecting the revenue, you just have to have an allocation for that. So, let's work together on that, because as, as I think, this is the first time I've seen unanimity in the, in the industry with regard to this issue stepping forward, you know, but, but, but I think we've established one thing today, the gold standard is the stamp. That has to be our goal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Duñez. I just want to also thank Cynthia, who's still on, thank you for being with us, and for your testimony today. So I think there are no further questions at this point. So, yeah, so there, yeah, no further testimonies. We can still receive testimony, written testimony, up until Monday, April 17th, but being that the bill's being withdrawn, but yeah, we're still open for any kind of input at this point. So now, Bill, the committee would now like to take a brief recess before we move on, and I'd just like to thank everybody for their participation.